Good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order the March 11th City Council meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Council President Garza.
Here.
Vice President Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Present.
Councilmember, um...
Pelavani.
Philalago.
Senator.
And Carter, Councilmember Carter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right.
Next to meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, does anyone from council have anyone they would like to be remembered at this time? All right, seeing no meditation, we are to moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we are to special ceremonies. The adding chapter 887, property tax exemption. I'm sorry, we have minutes, February 26.
Okay, we have a motion for February 26 minutes. Vice President Hussein.
Yep, so moved.
Got a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those polled, same sign? All right, motion passes, thank you.
All right, next we are on the special ceremonies. Adding chapter 887, property tax exemption and payment of lieu of taxes for workforce housing projects.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we actually took a look at this in DMP on March 5. We had Mr. Raleigh Van Fossen, who was the Director of Economic Development and Planning. He promised he would be here tonight to explain what this is. This is actually an opt-in ordinance. So he's going to explain that if this is approved later tonight, meaning the resolution, the public hearing will be set for March 18 at 7:00 p.m. So with that said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Raleigh.
Appreciate it, Vice President Hussein, and good to see everybody again tonight. As Vice President Hussein mentioned, we did give a presentation at the previously scheduled and held Development and Planning Committee. Tonight, we're just asking for you to set the public hearing, so you'll likely see us again at that public hearing, and also continuing to be involved with the Development and Planning Committee. Vice President Hussein hinted that this is an opt-in, and so for those who are not familiar with what pilot means, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. Traditionally, this community has been used to seeing pilots for housing development projects, generally affordable housing development projects that are aided in some sort of federally-financed, commonly the low-income housing tax credit process. Back in December of '22, the state legislature across the street expanded the Mishta, Michigan State Housing Development Authority Act, that opened the door for additional pilot programs to take place across the state. However, it's not guaranteed. That local jurisdiction would have to opt into what is being commonly referred to as workforce pilot. The main difference between the two is that workforce targets a higher income band, can go up to 120% of the area median income, versus your traditional pilots are generally targeting 80 or 60% of the median income or below. Again, the ask today from our department and the administration is for the city to buy or adopt into the state's recently expanded pilot, so that we have this in our toolkit. By no means is adopting in, and is this guaranteeing a project. And so some of the difference I wanted to make you aware of tonight as we go through this process are the following. The first major difference is there will be a requirement that every pilot, if passed under the draft ordinance, will have to be subject to council approval. Unlike the current process, if a developer is asking for a 10%, by right, the administration can grant that. Under the workforce pilot, there would be no by right. 10%, 9, you name the percentage, it would require council action. The second and largest difference outside the income band, as I mentioned, would be that there's going to be a proposed application fee. You don't see that in the current draft ordinance before you. It'll be a substitute coming alongside of it, and that'll be a requirement of the developer to pay and cover the time of economic development and planning staff, as well as others who are involved in that process. Again, that's different than the traditional pilot process you see today. Outside of that, conservatively, we estimate anywhere from zero to maybe two or three of these a year, if that. The question was asking committee if there are any pending requests. We've had had developers reach out to us regarding this, they're familiar, but they're also aware that it would require the city to opt in. So at this point, we don't have anything to offer any developers regarding or pertaining to the idea of a workforce pilot until this body acts. Happy to answer any other questions.
Do we have any questions? Vice President Hussein.
So by understanding the state statute, it was amended in, what, December of 2022 to allow for this?
Correct.
Have any communities across the state of Michigan opted in?
Sure, I know for certain the city of, or Traverse City has. My understanding, I haven't kept up exactly with the timing. Grand Rapids is either in process to buy in, if not, they may have already acted on such.
Do we have any further questions from council? Seeing no further questions, thanks for being here, Raleigh.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, next, we're to comments by council member and a city clerk.
Any comments from council? Councilwoman Pelavani.
Thank you, President Garza. I just wanted to let the community know that we will be holding the Cesar E. Chavez 15th Annual Memorial Celebration right here in council chambers on Thursday, March 28, from 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m. There is going to be a reception held afterward in the city council conference room. We are honored to have keynote speaker Judge Tony Flores join us, and we will have music and speakers, so everyone is invited to attend again on Thursday, March 28, from 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, first, I wanted to thank folks that came out to our Southwest Lansing constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. As always, well-attended, information disseminated, it was fantastic, great, I think, conversation. But specifically, I want to thank Fire Commissioner Kathy Toby, who was on hand, Park Board and Neighbor Advisory Board member Tierston Walters, who was on hand. We had Lansing Economic Development Corporation's Alex Watkins, Delisa Fontaine with the Department of Neighbors and Citizen Engagement was on hand, Meredith Johnson with Code Compliance. And then we had several charter commission candidates as well. So I appreciate each of those folks coming out, each of them shared, sorry, special information with groups, and I think probably most importantly, just heard from folks, which is incredibly important. Also want to announce the Southwest Action Group Spring Cleanup. This has really become kind of an annual effort, and it's grown quite a bit. And so now it includes cleanup of local parks, streets, parking lots, communal spaces, and there's a number of beautification efforts that are being contemplated as well. And so if folks are interested, this will be April 6 at 10:00 a.m., again, April 6 to 10:00 a.m. We're going to meet at the Town Square at Pleasant Grove Homes. And if you are interested, because we're trying to figure out what the scope of this cleanup is going to be, please email our development specialist, Paul Anderson, at paul@joinswag.org to sign up. Also, and I'm sure the mayor will discuss this as part of his comments a little bit later, but our small business facade grant applications are due this Friday, March 15. In terms of this fiscal year, the city has allocated $175,000. The reason I mention this, and there's a couple of different grant types. We have a $10,000 aesthetic grant, this is a dollar-for-dollar match, up to $10,000. We have a $20,000, this is supposed to be more transformational in nature, could even include up to some type of structural change to the building, but that's up to $20,000, dollar-for-dollar. And then there's also, sorry, a $2,000 design grant. The reason I bring this up is that we advocated in South Lansing pretty vigorously back in 2016 and 2017 for this particular program. We have been hearing from small business owners along South MLK, along Cedar, and some of our other north-southbound commercial corridors, that they just, they didn't feel the city was doing anything to assist them. They, you know, would read about pilots and Oprahs and things of that nature, and it was explained to them that unfortunately, the state's economic incentive toolbox doesn't necessarily contemplate that type of support for existing small businesses. So we started advocating for this, and in 2018, we were able to put in $15,000 with the help of the administration, $15,000, to kind of start this program. By the next year, actually, that had increased to $150,000, now it's at $175,000. That being said, between 2018 and 2022, only five of the 40 projects that have been funded have been in Southwest Lansing. And of the nearly $400,000 that have been doled out, only $30,000 have went to Southwest Lansing businesses. So I guess what I'm hoping is that folks will go to the Lansing Economic Development Corporation's page, pull up information with regard to this particular project, it has a ton of promise, and a lot of really, really amazing things have been done for our small business owners all across the city, and get into your favorite South Lansing businesses and share, share, share this information. Even if they can't get something in by the application deadline, which is March 15, which is this Friday, hopefully, they can reach out to the Economic Development Corporation, learn more about this, and be prepared to apply the next go-around. And then the last thing I wanted to encourage folks to do, we started, Sarah Anthony and myself started meeting with M.D., probably back in 2022, and we started talking about the speeds on our commercial corridors, particularly our state trunk lines, and the fact that although they are treated as freeways when we talk about speed limits, these really are residential and commercial corridors. And so Sarah Anthony was actually set to propose a bill that would actually change the way that speed limits are set on state trunk lines. Representative Slaw out of Ottawa County kind of beat her to the punch, and she was happy that he did, and fully supportive, but he actually proposed a bill last February in the House that would change the way that speed limits are set on state trunk lines. Currently, there is baked in state statute, a 85th percentile policy. What that means is if a community such as ours petitions the state to come in and potentially lower a speed limit, what they do, along with the state police, I'm down in state police, they actually study traffic volumes, they study traffic speeds, and then whatever 85% of the drivers are doing, they actually set the speed limit at the nearest multiple of five. And so what that means is if, as an example, the data comes back at 37.6, they are forced per that policy to set the speed limit at 40 miles per hour. This bill that is now, has been transmitted to the Senate, so it was actually transmitted last month to the Senate, passed the bill, or the House, I'm sorry, without amendment, I do believe. What it would do is allow, after the traffic study is done, for the speed limits on state trunk lines to be set within a multiple of five, so that same 37.6 could potentially result in them dropping the speed limit to 35. And that might not sound like much, but what communities would then be able to do, based on the language in the bill, is they would actually be able to petition to lower that all the way down to the 50th percentile of what those drivers are doing, if they can produce certain engineering reports, safety reports, things of that nature, where they can make the case. So it does give us a little bit of control over the speed limits on our state trunk lines, and I know that this is something that, when I talk to residents, when I talk to business owners along some of these state trunk lines, they are incredibly supportive of that. So I'm asking folks if you too believe that the speed limits are out of control on some of our state trunk lines, such as South MLK, Cedar, Grand River, and the like, to contact your senator and voice your support for House Bill 4012.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Thanks to me, I have something to share.
Yeah, I don't see any other, is there any other council comments? It's up to you, clerk, then.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of City Clerk Chris Swope, I just wanted to share that the ballots for the May Charter Commission Special Election will be mailed out March 28. For those on the permanent ballot list, you don't have to do anything, the ballots will be coming to you. Anyone else who wants a ballot mailed to them, you can sign up online at lancivotes.gov or put a signed request in one of our drop boxes or email us. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has an event to share, you have up to one minute to speak to share details about your event.
I'm here to invite you to the Maple Syrup Festival held at Fenner Nature Center. It's an annual event. Pancakes, maple syrup, this year we're having maple cotton candy, maple cream, maple sugaring. You can watch them tap trees and see how maple syrup is made. Anybody who wants to can help stir the big pot and see how it tastes. So I'm just here to promote this event because I volunteer at the Fenner Nature Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries is going to be sponsoring a special event that will take place in North Cemetery on Saturday, April 13, from 9 to noon. It's cemetery and monument recording. It will teach you the basics of cemetery survey methodology and documentation using the Michigan's Historic Cemetery's Preservation Guide as our reference. Excuse me. Practical application of basic mapping techniques, photography, and headstone documentation. No cost, and all materials are provided. You can register for this online at our website, lancemfriends.org. Thank you.
I'm here as a member advocate with the Nation Outside, which is a state and local organization which helps citizens returning to the community after incarceration. And we offer training and assistance from other good, law-abiding ex-offenders, I suppose to call them returning citizens, to transition to a life-affirming and life-adjusting, life-compatible lifestyle. So we have several advocates, including Monica Janer. You may know her. She is someone who helps felons, gets a lot of grants for them. She was incarcerated for 20 years, and I'm sure her landlord is happy about that. So we have at least two other advocates who also have a criminal history and who know how to transition to a law-abiding lifestyle, and so they want to help other people. So if you want to find out more, come to our local chapter meeting every third Thursday at 5:00. There'll be pizza. And our, the one who coordinates everything will be there to answer all kinds of questions because we believe that one day it will be required. It's called the Fair Housing Act, and that's a big push that we have going on at the national level. So come and have pizza.
So the Eastside Neighborhood Organization, or ENO for short, will be hosting a candidate's forum for the candidates for Lansing City Charter Commission at the Allen Neighborhood Center, that is 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. It'll be on Thursday, March 14, Pi Day, at 6:00 p.m., and will end at 8:00 p.m., where candidates will be seated at a table with voters, will have all, will have an opportunity to ask questions to candidates, like me, of course, and others, and 35 others as well, and they will have important questions ready to ask. After about 10 minutes, each candidate will move to another table, which will continue for every 10 minutes until it ends at 8:00 p.m. And I hope that other candidates other than me, as well as members of the public, attended.
Thank you.
Deborah Mulcahy, good evening. I just want the city residents who might not be notified via postcard or letters from the city to know that Thursday, the 21st of March, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., at the Union Missionary Baptist Church at 500 South Martin Luther King, the city of Lansing will hold a meeting to discuss, an informational meeting, what they are proposing to do at MLK in regard to the realignment and the boulevard removal. At 5:45, they will be giving a presentation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Appling, and I'm here to invite everybody to an oratorical scholarship contest that's being sponsored by the sorority Zeta Phi Beta Theta Row Chapter, and the topic is youth violence, where do we go from here? It will be held Saturday, March 23, at the museum, the state museum, and we would invite everybody. It starts at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more events? Any more events? All right. If not, then we'll go on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. You have one more minute to complete the blue sheet, to speak on any items 3 through 18, which includes the show cause hearing. Actually, the show cause hearing, you want to sign in on the green sheet, and that would be for the owner of 1326 North Genuson, should call, sign in on the green sheet. Everyone else, if you wanted to speak on the public hearing, the consent agenda, resolution for action, go see, tag there, and we'll have you, you can sign in on the blue sheet. And then next, we're on to mayor's comments.
Mayor Schorr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. First, Councilman Hussein stole a little bit of my thunder, but I can agree with him 100%. The facade, our facade grants, which are hugely important for our corridors all around the city, the round closes this Friday. People can go to our LEDC website to apply, and I would certainly encourage all businesses throughout the city, but I do know that in certain areas, especially where we have court of improvement authorities and other things, so South MLK and Grand River and Michigan Avenue and Saginaw, we've got folks that are walking up and down the street and talking to business owners and explaining the program. So hopefully, we'll get a lot of applications, we look forward to it. There's nothing more exciting than when we can update a business exterior and work with the business owner. You all heard from Councilman Hussein the different amounts and matches and things like that, but we've seen some incredible progress, and I'd love to see more. So that deadline for this round is this Friday. Also, we have our neighborhood grants that go through our Department of Neighborhoods, Arts and Citizen Engagement. They are extending their neighborhood grant deadline for applications through March 29. So if you have civic organizations or neighborhood organizations that want to do projects or newsletters or whatever else, they have until March 29 to get in their application. So two good programs that have been funded by our city that we really hope folks will take advantage of. And then just finally, I know, I'm not generally part of the discussion, although I'm always happy to answer questions on any of the resolutions tonight, but I want to commend the city council for the, tonight, I think, is going to be a transformational night for our city, but you have certainly done your homework. You have asked the right questions, we provided you the information, so I'm excited to see the votes today, and we'll move forward, but I do want to commend this council for their due diligence on all of the different resolutions that are before you, and I look forward to the evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Schorr.
Okay, first, then, we have the show cause hearings. We have two of them. Order to make safer demolish to the owners of 1326 North Genuson Avenue and then also 159 Linwall Street.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So we have two make-safere-demolishes that came before public safety. The first one is going to be 1326 North Genuson Avenue. The listed taxpayer is James Aker. At this time, it looks like there's no permits pulled. This was originally red-tagged, 7/25 of 2022. The demolition board took this up August 24 of 2023 and gave it a 60-day make-safere-demolish. This house is not fire damaged. And that is the first one. The other one is going to be 1519 Linwall Street. The original red tag date on this house was 10/1 of 2015. It looks like it was submitted to the Make-Safere-Demolish Board, 8/23 of 19, and it has had several hearings with there. This property is fire damaged. The owner on file is Mikey 23 Foundation. It looks like there have been no inspections on the plumbing or electrical permits. The permit for the electrical was pulled in '21, plumbing '22, and they have two approved inspections in 2022 and one partial approval in November of 2023 for a footing.
Thank you for, thank you, Councilman Cost. Those both go back to Public Safety Committee?
Well, first, we can have them speak, and then we'll do their, so we have two to sign in, the owners of those property. So first, why don't we take James Aker, and then follow that by a representative for the Mikey 23 Foundation. And you'll have up to, up to three minutes.
I'm James Aker, 1322, 1326, and 1330 North Genuson. I'd tell you folks some good news first. Last Thursday, there's a sewer down the street by me that is full of leaves right up to the top, and I called the city people, and within an hour, the guy was there to look at it. I was kind of impressed with showing up that quick. I was hoping he was going to say, okay, I'm going to send a truck out right now, but he says they're going to be getting sewers cleaned. They call them catch basins. But there's no water going down that thing. I don't know, who would stuff it so full of leaves right up to the top like that? But anyways, about the house, I had gotten some estimates last fall to get it taken down. One guy said 20,000, another guy said 6,000. And then I ran into a, what I call a con man, that's supposed to be 2,500, and then he, oh, yeah, well, I gave him 2,500. Then he wanted 3,000 to rent a Bobcat, and then 2,000 to rent a dumpster. So there I am up, getting near 5,000, well, 5,000. And then he charged me 200 one day for taking the little awning down off the front steps and to move the little stove out of there for me, because after three strokes, I'm not that good at moving stuff anymore. But he said, give me $200. I thought that was kind of outrageous for that, but anyways, I didn't talk about billing permits or demo permit with him. Turns out, he did not want to get a permit. He says, you go down there and get it. So I was supposed to be a licensed contractor, as far as I can understand. And he just refused, and so here I got 7,700 bucks into him, and he says, I'm not giving you your money back after I got another guy to take it down from Oakhamus. And so this guy, he just looks at, I said, I want my money back, and he just looked at me real stupid, like, what money? Because with no money coming in, that might as well be $70,000 to me. So I would like to find out from somebody what I have to do to get that money back out of him. One roof I was talking to, he said, well, that's a felony to take money like that. But we were arguing so much about it, I thought people would be coming out of their houses that one day when he come over, and he found out I'd hired somebody else, and I thought, he's no good to me with not wanting to get a permit. Because Lynn Puente, I talked to her, and she said, don't you let him do anything without a permit. Because obviously, he doesn't have a license to be doing what he's doing. That's my tie up, huh? So anyways, I've been trying. And I'm probably going to have to call this other guy again from Oakhamus to finish up the job, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next... Next speaker is a representative for the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation.
Councilman Cost.
I just wanted to mention real quick, both of these make safe or demolishes will be before public safety tomorrow. In that conference room at three-thirty, I failed to, I'm sorry, four o'clock, I failed to mention that earlier. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, President Garza and council members, thank you for this opportunity. For some of you who don't know what we really do in the community with our kids, this is some of my crew right here. They come to support the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation. If anybody know about construction, when you're teaching youth in order to install a window, it might take them a very long time to install that window correctly. And so part of our process of Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation, we not only teach them a building trade, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and all the above, but we teach them something to be proud of. And if you can look at this pictures before and after pictures of what this house used to look like, this house is one of the better-looking houses on the block. And it's win-win for the city. For us as a community and as a foundation, we look at it like this. If you tear this house down, that looks better than any house on the block. It's not a win-win for the city. Because fully remodeled, because that's what we do with our homes, it's a win-win for the city. Because what it does, it goes back to the property tax roll. And it's a win-win for our residents, and it's a win-win for the entire community, and it's a win-win for our youth that's right behind me. And it's a win-win for keeping my son Michael's legacy alive. And so I just want to let you know that we are, and I don't knock the demolition board, you know, Lynn, Walter, Dave, I don't knock them at all because they're doing their job. You know, they want to make sure that the houses are safe. But this house right now is very safe. Everything inside and out, everything is structurally sound, and when we put it back together, and we are, we do have our permits in place. And I'm asking the City Council, one of the things that they assess, the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation, they assess us a two thousand dollar bill, which is, it's taken away from our community and these youth right here, it's taken away from that. And I'm asking them to kind of waive that two thousand dollars, put it back into the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation. And, you know, I just really want to thank you for this opportunity and for anyone that do not know about the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation. And there are some individuals that's out here, sitting right here, that are part of the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation as well. So again, you know, I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you for giving us a little time so that we can finish up this project. And again, it's not a speedy process. It's not like a contractor can come and knock something out, you know, like for instance, my, my, my construction company. But however, when you're teaching these kids, it's going to take time. And so I'm just asking the City Council member to give the Mikey Twenty-Three Foundation and our due time to finish this project up and the next project up. Because the very first house that we did, and this is a, this is a fire damaged house, the very first house that we renovated was a damaged house as well. And it sold when we completed it, the very first day, for the, for, for the top-notch price that we was acting for. Again, thank you.
Thank you. So next, we are, do I do the referral first and then?
The show, okay, yeah, so the, so show, show cause hearings for the make safe or demolish at owners at thirteen twenty-six North Genuson will go to public safety tomorrow afternoon, as well as the orders to make safe demolish to owners of fifteen nineteen Linwall Street will be at public safety tomorrow.
All right. Then we're next to public comment on legislative matters, legislative mayor confess of the consent agenda, agenda for action, introduction of the ordinance, and the scheduled public hearing of the noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers to allow for combined sewer overflow phase two project.
Thank you, Mr. President. This today is scheduled for a public hearing for a noise special permit for the sewer separation project. This area is on the north side by North Street, near Reasoner Park and Turner Street. It's their turn to go through the sewer separation, for those who don't know. Our city is mandated to separate our sanitary and our storm sewers from going together into the river. I guess sanitary has to go to its own place and not dump and pollute our rivers more. So that's a project that's ongoing, and the construction company that's working on it has requested to work on some Saturdays. Just like all the other places, they try not to work Saturdays, but based on the weather and the things that they have to do, sometimes they do need to work on Saturdays. So it requires them to come to council for a special noise permit. We had this in committee, and we had a representative speak on it. There was no public comment at that time, and that is the public hearing scheduled for
So that will go to?
We'll start with the public hearing. So I can call the first person, does that's okay?
Thank you.
Sure. First speaker is Malik Brown, followed by Samantha Leland. That's why I put you first there, Malik.
I appreciate it.
Sure. Come on down. He has his entourage.
Hi, I am Malik. I'm from Osco to Michigan. I'm a country kid that doesn't know much and came down to Lansing and found great opportunity. I had a TV talk show that was live on public access over there on Miller Road. I had an acting class that made me, had set me up to meet people like Keanu Reeves when he had a movie in Detroit, Michigan. I took acting classes and then learned how to do hip hop, and I performed in Detroit and other places. Me, yeah, I was a rapper, y'all. And then I did comedy at Connections Comedy Club, and I performed in, what is, what is Detroit East? Windsor, Toronto, I've been booed off the stage three times and went back the second and third time on purpose to make it longer. I've done that. I performed in Vancouver, British Columbia, which is other Hollywood, and partly performed there because Eddie Murphy got stopped at the border and wasn't able to make it through. So they didn't know that I wasn't Eddie Murphy. People were really nice, but that's another story entirely. What I'm trying to say is, all these opportunities came from Lansing, Michigan, as a foundation, as a base. I was a country kid from Osco that didn't know diddly about entertainment or otherwise, but I had opportunity. Now, I'm not saying I'm great or magnificent, but I know Dom Cochrane, who's been working on this Ovation thing for I don't know how long, because of his experience of, of what he's done in Lansing, he's magnificent, right? The people that are working with him are magnificent. The people that put the plan together are magnificent. The people that found the money are magnificent. The people that gave the money are magnificent. The fact that the state approved this, that's magnificent. So we have an opportunity to be even more magnificent of a Lansing. However, if it's not approved certain parts by y'all, that ovation will be mediocre. And I am sick of Lansing being considered mediocre, especially when you have an opportunity to be magnificent. Now, I live here purposefully with Lansing on my back twenty-four seven, and my children go here purposefully so we can be magnificent, and I need Lansing to be magnificent. And a place like the Ovation is an opportunity for these children to see something they would not normally be able to see if it wasn't for a space like the Ovation. So I don't know the math. I ain't that smart. I'm a dumb kid from Osco to Michigan. Y'all the smart ones, and y'all figure out the math to make sure Lansing's what? Magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Leland, followed by Norma Baer.
I'm Samantha Lee. I'm a young working professional. I'm from Lansing originally and went to Michigan State. And after I graduated from Michigan State, I moved to Chicago. I was out there for seven years before moving back to our city. I'm speaking on item sixteen, the brownfield number seventy-seven for the ovation as well. Since moving back to our city, I have really tried to be a champion of mid-Michigan. And I believe to elevate mid-Michigan to that next level, we need people who speak very highly of the city, speak highly of the city passionately and consistently. And I truly believe that that is what is going to take our cities to the next level. Now, I see a lot of familiar faces here in the audience and up here on, at the council, and these are leaders of our city. But when we're thinking about future leaders, that next wave of leadership, Lansing needs and deserves the best of the best leadership. And so when I'm speaking in support of the brownfield plan for the ovation is because I believe that this development in its highest form is an opportunity to create community hub that will help retain talent in our city and attract new talent. Young leaders, they want entertainment, and they want restaurants, and they want a community hub to be attracted to a city. And not only that, but other people from other cities will be attracted to mid-Michigan as well. And so we have an opportunity to knock down the first domino in a long series of dominos that is going to elevate our city and make our city great and bring it to that next level. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Norma Baer, followed by Linda Appeling.
I'm Norma Bauer, and I'm here to talk about the big brownfield plan thing. And I've spoken to the developer, and I've spoken to the people who are involved in this. And I'm satisfied and pleased to see that you're all been doing due diligence on this project. And as I said, I knew that you pretty much have to approve it. So I'm glad. And I still have a question for the developer, which is related to ovation, because I believe that one of the units in that one building is going to be three stories for potential tenants who have five members. And I remember seeing two dollars and forty-one cents per square foot, which, wow, that'd be seven thousand dollars in rent if you were going to do that. But I'm sure that there's another way to do that. So just keep asking questions. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Appeling, followed by Jennifer Estill.
For the record, my name is Linda Appeling. I'm a resident of Lansing, Michigan. Over on the part that you guys always forget about, you know, eating county. You always forget that Lansing covers two counties, not just one. I wish you would kind of remember that sometimes. What I'd like to talk about today, I'll go through this rather fast. One is in terms of the skyscraper. That thing is too big, it costs too much, and it will burden the taxpayers. However, if you do approve it, please assess the building for new fire equipment, because what we currently have will not be able to reach that high. They should also be assessed for training of firefighters, and three, maintenance of said equipment. The maintenance and the training should be, that particular assessment should be on a continual basis. I see no reason why I, as a resident in Lansing, should have to pay for this. I'm tired of paying for other people's money in terms, in relationship to that. It's my belief that if someone wants to use the building as an office or even a home, I am not responsible for their decision. Why should I have to pay excessively in terms of my taxes and to provide damage protection? Unless, in essence, taxpayers should not be held responsible for the services provided. Why should we be held responsible for those services? I will not get one single item out of that building. Nothing will come to me as a result of that building, not a single thing. The other item I wanted to talk about was the purchase of the Mason Building. I see no reason why the city should purchase the building. The building's ten years older than the current city hall we have. That ma, thus, it makes no sense. Secondly, forty million is not going to be enough to rehab that building. It really isn't. Thus, you will probably be coming back to the taxpayers for additional money. Now, if you are going to do anything with the building, I would suggest that you stick the bus station in there, the new bus station that you want, rather than trying to stick city hall in there. Or if you want, and this one would be deep to, deep for me, I would really think that you should put a skate park over on the south side. More kids would like that, they'd have fun, and also a lot of adults in terms of that. And definitely consider rehabbing that building for the bus terminal. Thirdly, you should take a look at our current bus system. It really sucks.
Next speaker is Jennifer Estill, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
I'm Jen Estill. I'm here on behalf of Downtown Lansing, Inc. I am their board chair. I'm also a Lansing resident, a property owner downtown, and a small business owner downtown. And on behalf of all of us, we can't wait for some of these great projects to come. We all know thriving downtowns don't happen by accident. They take a lot of work, they take a lot of vision, they take a lot of data, they take a lot of planning. Last year, Downtown Lansing, Inc. completed a comprehensive market analysis that gave us a lot of data about what we need downtown to thrive. And that includes housing, high rises, will bring lots and lots of people downtown. It includes amenities like the ovation and the rooftop bar that we'll get if we get the brownfield. It includes great public services and the preservation of gorgeous old buildings like the temple. So again, on behalf of Downtown Lansing, Inc., and all of the small businesses that will feel the ripple effect when these projects succeed, we're very excited for you to vote yes, yes, and yes. We're very excited to get started and not be stagnant and not wait anymore. And we are excited to see all this new development and all the people who can live downtown, enjoy activities downtown, and help the whole city thrive. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Deborah Mulcahy.
Well, on the ovation, I didn't have a chance. I was just scrolling through the city clerk's documentation for tonight's meeting, and I didn't find it quickly. But if, if I understand it correctly, seventeen is a requirement from the city council that the ovation be self-sustaining. Is that an accurate assessment of that, that item? Anybody? Yes, no? Okay. All right. Assuming it is accurate, I support that. I think that there is no reason on earth, after all the promises and all the numbers and all the projections that we've heard from Dominic and his crew, that we should not put in black and white, that the facility has to be self-sustaining, period. I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deborah Mulcahy, followed by Sean Elliott.
Good evening again, Deborah Mulcahy. There's two issues that cities and communities throughout Michigan, and actually the world, have to deal with. Here in particular, Michigan is the quality of our roads, we've all heard that, and the issue of housing, the shortage of housing. I've not really been paying much attention to this project in reference to the skyscrapers, et cetera. But I do know that I have concern, even though the buildings weren't gorgeous, the buildings on Ottawa Street at the weren't gorgeous, the buildings on Ottawa Street at the intersection of Walnut to the east, and it's basically two city blocks, are being removed for a skyscraper-type building. What I don't understand is why, when we have such an amount of excess of office space, that we're putting offices there. I cannot wrap my head around that. Office space does not need to be encroaching further to the west. It needs to be kept downtown. And I think that you need to be mindful of that in future evaluations of how you're going forward with developments. Keep the developments downtown for the office space, and keep the residential area in the downtown area where it is. And help the people that are residents live in those homes or fix them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Elliott, followed by David Ellis.
How you guys doing? Sean Elliott, I think most of you know me, but this is my first time in front of this new gathered body. So, welcome to the new members. We've got some projects coming up this year, so I'll be in front of you more with some of the Saginaw projects on the Park Furniture Building and a few others. As some of you know, I've been associated with many projects in the Central Business District and around Lansing. My style's a little bit different than some of the other developers. I seem to find myself in the really rundown, broken buildings, and everyone else seems to pass those up, but that's where I thrive. Just this past year, I did 927 West Saginaw, the Moneyball headquarters, and I'm really proud of that. And I think it's a really good public access. And, oh, they've left, but I had Mikey 23 Foundation on that building with us. We have three consequential projects in front of us tonight. Ovation, Dominic Cochran and I started working on that in '04, I believe. The first site we were trying to push for that was over on Cedar Street at the Chief Card Site. Dominic's, you know, kept it, his passion. He stayed on it. It's definitely needed for the city. These other two projects, I hear some people kind of shaming the political connectedness of the developers. That's necessary in this world. If you go to other cities, Detroit has, you know, they have the group of investors down there. Grand Rapids has theirs. I don't consider these developers my competitors. I consider them contributors. We have a city, and our city is a product, and it needs different things to attract people in, to attract in residents, to attract in businesses. We have vacancies, and if people want to come back and fill those vacancies, it's going to be driven by employees who actually want to be down here. So, these high rises and a new City Hall that leaves this building, you know, cleaned up for other opportunities, all of those things are steps in the right direction. So, I'll leave you with this. We have a motto in our company, you know, "Don't make perfect the enemy of good." These are really good projects, and I hope that we support them because, you know, I've put a lot of sweat equity in in this town, and these projects would help all of us that have really cut our teeth and reinvested our fortunes here. So, I hope it works out for the city. Thank you.
All right. Next is Dave Ellis, followed by Brett Dreyfus.
Hi, David Ellis, resident of downtown. Firstly, just wanted to very briefly comment on the ovation and how excited I am to see it be approved, because I'm hoping that you will all approve the number for it. Just very quickly story on that. Grawald Hall on the corner of Washington and Washtenaw, it's a newer venue. I wrote it off at 100%. I totally thought it was going to be a complete failure, and I just, I never paid attention to it because I thought, this is not going to work. And then I was walking downtown just the other week, and there was a line all the way down and around the block to get in. So, clearly, there is a strong, strong demand for venues like this in Lansing that I completely was unaware of. But it's right there. So, this is something I'm excited to see. As for the proposals with the Gentilosi Project, I, last meeting, I had spoken in strong support of it. I do have some reservations the more I've looked into it. There are some concerns I have with how some of these numbers are looking. Run it, like, I checked, what's the cost per unit for the entire build? And it's just on, it's $478,000 a unit for the $220 million construction cost and 460 units proposed. That just, to me, that does not seem like a strong return on investment if we're going to be putting $40 million into it. I looked at some other developments around town. The most recent I could find comparable to it was the Gillespie Marketplace Apartments on the corner of Shiahawasi and Cedar, which, some back-of-the-envelope math, in modern terms, appeared to be the equivalent of, I think it was $260,000 a unit if you were to build a building like that today, which, with similar construction ratios to what we're seeing with their project, would be about 900 units of housing. So, I'm not, I love this development. I can't stress that enough. It is a beautiful-looking development, but I do wish we had seen it go to a bid process, so we could have seen what, what could these numbers, this $40 million, have actually gotten us? This, this could have been the best option for it. It very well might be. But we will never know if there was a better alternative, because we didn't do this work to actually go and see what other developers could have, what they could have done for us. We could have put out a proposal and said, hey, if you're a developer in the entire Midwest who wants $40 million to put a development in Lansing, even if they were all failing to meet our goals and this was the best one, that would have gotten tons and tons of proposals on the table, so we could see other visions and other ideas. So, for future projects, I'm really hoping to see it not go to a no bid as this one did, so we can put the work in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brett Dreyfus, followed by Michael Lynn.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Brett Dreyfus. I'm here tonight to urge you all to vote no on item 13 on the $40 million transformational housing grant. I don't know if there's a form of mass hypnosis going on or not, but this is absolutely not transformational. Putting the word "transformational" in front of something doesn't just make it transformational. This is the opposite of transformational. This is status quo. This is a 25-story, high-rise skyscraper with approximately 400 units that's going to require over $100,000 subsidy of taxpayer money per unit. That is not transformational. It's not even a market-ready project. It requires taxpayer money to subsidize the entire project to even make it go. It's not community building, because people living in 25-story buildings do not typically form community. They come into a garage, and they, they leave the building in a garage, and they come back into the house, into their apartment building in a garage. They don't mingle on the streets. I grew up in New York City. I spent my entire childhood and young adulthood in New York City. You do not build community with skyscrapers. The developer mentioned in an interview that he went to Cincinnati and had seen Cincinnati. This is not Cincinnati. And also, they do not provide $40 million projects to fund skyscrapers. The real issue here is that we need a much better vision, and we shouldn't simply just go for it. This is not just another one-off. You should turn this down and form a task force and find ways to give the money and form a true vision. That could include cooperative housing, alternative housing. There are all sorts of nonprofits in the community, the Capital Area Housing Partnership. There are many ways to look at this. Don't rush and accept money. This is a dirty project. It's dirty politically, and it's dirty economically. It's dirty politically because State Senator Sam Singh and State Representative Sarah Anthony each received $15,000 in campaign contributions to personally shepherd this through the legislative system and create a no-bid contract to land on your desk. That is wrong, and that is the opposite of transformational. That is the equivalent of dirty politics. And I'm shocked that State Senator Sam Singh and State Representative Sarah Anthony are a part of this boondoggle. They need to return that money to show faith in our own community, because that money greets the wheels to allow you to get a no-bid contract. It's outrageous that you're even considering this and are going to vote to accept this tonight. There's so much that could be done with that money, and instead, we're doing the same old, same old. Developer's going to come to you and probably want tax credits afterwards. TIF, Tax Tax Incremental Financing. So, not only are you going to get the 40 million upfront, but probably you're going to have issues with getting property, full property taxes down the road. That's the way this, these projects typically go. So, really, what we have is we have a great opportunity here to have a transformational $40 million injection into the Lansing area using real vision. Take some time, folks. Create a real vision. Don't just go for what comes in front of you from dirty money, dirty politics. Thank you.
Next is Michael Lynn, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Wow, how do I follow that? He used a real good term in the beginning. What hypnosis are they using on y'all? Plainly. I've had conversations with at least three of y'all that I for sure knew wasn't going to pass this thing along. And it hasn't passed yet. It's just in council right now, so I'm hoping that you all second guess. But Brian T. Jackson said that nobody's persuaded you, or none of that persuades you, and it absolutely does. It absolutely does. When you get inundated by the chamber and all these individuals that are in here in these Coscheck suits, it absolutely does. Even if they're not talking, you're not talking back to them, it does, bro. Plain and simple. It would mean if I was sitting up there. I'd have to be super staunch on my place. I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to stand up against it. But what Ryan Kosh just did in those last two votes, not one of you all had the gall to do that, even though I've heard that conversation come from you. Jeff, you asked 1,000 questions about if we turn this secondary down. What does that mean? And then just voted yes, just like that. I don't understand it. I don't understand it. You guys all had severe, real questions. Y'all all had serious questions as we sit here. What about, what about, what about, what about? You get none of those answers. One thing I know about growing up on the south side, I can't be swindled. It don't matter what you show up to me with, I'm going to know. I ain't never been juke out of a dollar, period. I'm going to ask all the questions. I don't care about asking the questions. I'm going to stand strong on it. I'm going to ask the third and fourth question. No matter how uncomfortable you get, you're not going to put a timeframe on me. You're not going to tell me I got to do it before this time comes. Well, then we just, ain't none of us getting nothing then. If we got to turn that money back to the state because you brought a terrible proposal to us, that's not on me. It's not on me. Stop acting like it's y'all fault, or y'all got to get rushed into a situation because they keep bringing you things to tell you through a corrupt attorney that it's up or down. You guys have all asked questions of whether or not that city attorney's opinion was, was right or not, and didn't get no answer on it other than the city attorney's opinion, which you guys got called ooh, 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 virus for wanting a third-party investigation on things that you caught him saying up here in front of everybody under oath when he threatened y'all over the similar type of information. Yo, seriously, wake up, man. Wake up. If what Paul Gentilosi's bringing is the right thing, then nobody should have a problem with it taking time to figure it out. Why are we ramrodding this to anybody? If the City Hall move is the right thing, then great for everybody, man. It looks just like Night Court. Hell, I'll have it. If it's the right thing to do. But find it out first. Don't get ramrodded. You can't sell me nothing if I can't have time to think about it. If I go to buy a car and they tell me, well, you got till the end of the day, I'm gone because you said that to me. If my kid comes and asks me to stay the night at a friend's house, and I find out it's not the friend, just because you lied to me, you don't get to go. So, everybody has questions about the process, the switcheroo. Once you do that, I'm opening all chambers to find out what's going on. The fact that y'all are sitting here and thinking about passing this, just like this man said, with what Ryan said about all these funds going out, and you're telling me that that's just the way it goes here? That's just what we do? Come on, man.
Next speaker is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Eric Stanley.
You're getting very sleepy. I am a greedy guy here, and you're getting very sleepy, council. I will make you all force-build a giant skyscraper to build a fake community and to use a building that's an entire decade older that was previously used as a religious building, despite the fact that it violates the separation of church and state, and use that as a new City Hall. Okay? And to make you snap, to make you snap out of it, I'm going to say the word that says S-T-O-P about, while raising my voice. And that is, one, two, three, four, five, stop! Because all of this, you're doing, like, all seriousness, like, using a development to build, like, as the previous speaker said, skyscrapers do not exactly build communities. Actual houses throughout neighborhoods actually build communities. Just whoever came up with this idea of a legislation, whoever that is, clearly has no idea what a neighborhood association really is. Not that I should know, since my neighborhood, the old Ever neighborhood, doesn't have an active one. But still, I've been to several, and I do know what an actual community association is. And skyscrapers ain't going to cut that stuff. And as for the new City Hall being at a Masonic Temple, again, as someone said before, 10 years older, so probably is going to have the same problems of a ceiling caving, and also using an old religious building as a city, for where City Council or City Hall should be located. Like, for real, it's, you know, this, I'm, I'm just going to say this here, disclaimer, I have no problems with organized religion, but I do have a problem with encroachments on separation of church and state. And this kind of does count as this, since you're using an old religious building to house your government, which is just not the best place to do it. And seriously, you should have considered something like Cooley Law School or some of that old university stuff for the new City Hall. That would have been a much better place for it, if not just keep it here. Because again, using a building like that that's 10 years older than this and just kind of defeats the purpose of the separation of church and state, this just shows how corrupt our city governments really become. And one of the main reasons I am actually running for the charter commission, so that we don't get through shady dealings like this with our buildings.
All right. I'd like to give notice to our virtual participants that we have two more speakers before Kathleen Edgerly and Nancy DeJoy will participate virtually. So, I want to kind of give a heads up there versus Eric Stanley, then Mitch Rice.
Good evening. My name's Eric Stanley. I'm project manager for Hoffman Brothers. So, I'm here for item five on the noise waiver. North Street from Turner to Larch, they have 60 calendar days to complete that. We have two jack and bores under the railroad required by the railroad to be continuous. So, in order to get that section done, we need a noise waiver to work Saturdays. Otherwise, it will be unachievable. And then also on Beaver Street, within the same project, we have 30 calendar days to achieve the same jack and bore underneath the old railroad tracks there as well. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, then we have Kathleen Edgerly doing virtual participation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. In regard to resolution for action number 17, the city council statement for ovation to be self-sustaining, I'm supportive of this resolution. The city of Lansing should not maintain long-term commitments and costs for buildings that are entertainment or business venues. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now ready to do our first virtual participation. So, if City TV, if we can, is Kathleen Edgerly out there?
Good evening.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hopefully. Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Kathleen Edgerly, I serve as the executive director of Downtown Lansing, Inc., and I'm speaking in support of items 13 through 16. As a downtown management agency, DLI is committed to promoting both the culture and vitality of Michigan's downtown. And we're champions for best practice, not bare minimum. It's why we led a comprehensive market analysis, or a CMA, for the downtown district, which was conducted thanks to the support of the MEDC and done in coordination with neighboring districts, as well as 20-plus stakeholders around the city. That comprehensive market analysis, or CMA, showed support for projects like the ones up for discussion and a vote before you tonight. The CMA showed a need for rehabbing office spaces, preserving great buildings, rehabbing other buildings for dynamic uses and turning them into residential or hotel spaces. The CMA also showed that in order to attract more residents and cultivate more diverse business hours, we needed amenities and entertainment options like the ovation that will attract people to our city as a destination. And the CMA showed the need for more housing in our downtown that could support diverse family structures and a variety of income levels. As leaders, you have the ability to bring about transformative change for the future of our city with action and investment. Action and investment to support housing, entertainment venues, enhanced community spaces, and accessible options that will attract more talent and more people looking to call Lansing in the heart of our capital city home. The proposed projects are, I believe, supported by both public and private funding, will have a significant impact not only for downtown, but for the economic growth of our entire city and our region, as we work towards a long-term transformation of the capital city in Michigan's downtown. Thank you for your leadership and support of these important projects.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy DeJoy. Nancy, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please begin.
Great. Um, most of you know me, if you know me, as supporting residents for the Capital City Film Festival and as somebody who advocates for art for social justice in the greater Lansing community. I'd like to talk a little bit about the original plans for the ovation, and in support of that project, I'd also, I'd like to remind us that space for creativity, both for making and for being visitors to entertainment spaces is vital to our, the health and well-being of our community. The arts are at the heart of our ability to think in inclusive ways about mental health and physical health of the people in our community. There, there are other things that I think are very exciting, like silver bells from the rooftop and spaces in the original plan for visiting artists and members of our community to work together and, and to do creative projects. But my, the main thing I wanna say is please remember that outdoor spaces, creativity, and access to multimedia opportunities to work with experts and for the young artists in our community to thrive and remain healthy, we have to think about these spaces as at the heart of inclusion and diversity in our community, especially those members who have been disproportionately affected by the histories of racism and injustice upon which our land sits. So thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes our public comment, and we're to the referral of the public hearing on the noise special permit.
That'd be referred back to city operations.
And then we're on to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So as part of tonight's consent agenda, we do have a setting of a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. A public hearing would be April 15th. We have a resolution of workers' compensation settlement claim number W C 2876-21-0003758. We have a resolutions of, I'm sorry, resolution of grant acceptance. This deals with the National League of Cities, Cities Addressing Fines and Fees Equitability Initiative, Faculty Advisor Grant for the Office of Financial Empowerment, and then we have a grant acceptance, and this would be from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Grants. That being said, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Our motion passes.
All right. Next, we are to resolutions for action, and we first have three appointments. The first one is Nikki Thompson-Frazier as a business representative, member of Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, and I do believe we still have Nikki Frazier. Yep, we do, in fact, and the audience fantastic. We actually had Nikki in front of us on March 5th as part of our development and planning meeting. It was a tremendous interview. And so this particular board has five positions for owners/operators. She is the current owner of Suite Encounters, which is in the NAPS building, and anybody that's been there, I know you guys have, as a matter of fact, I think the first time I was ever there was with Mr. Mayor Carter and her husband, right? So in any event, very, very good interview, talked about really wanting to, you know, advance the downtown district, spoke to everything that is happening downtown now, and, and, you know, just a lot of excitement for the future. So we certainly appreciate her willingness. This did pass unanimously out of development and planning, and so with that said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All right, Councilwoman Carter.
No question, but I just wanna say I appreciate you taking this new endeavor as a board member of Downtown Lansing, Inc. I see what you do with the community, for the community, and for our businesses, especially our small businesses, so thank you for this, this, this lead that you're doing, because I know you're gonna lead it well, and again, I just appreciate you accepting and saying yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Stand here so everyone can see and hear what you said, all right?
Yes.
Do you solemn swear, do you affirm the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board Member according to best of your ability?
I will.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is Stephanie Palagi with Arts and Culture Commission.
And that would be Vice President Hussein.
Yep, so same thing, we actually vetted this particular appointment in development and planning on March 5th. This is for Stephanie, I believe it's Palagi.
Palagi.
Palagi, perfect. And this is for an at-large member position on the Arts and Culture Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. This particular, particular commission does consist of eight at-large positions and four ward representatives, one for each respective ward. There are currently three vacancies with regard to the at-large positions on this particular commission. Miss will fill one of those. Ms. Palagi did a fantastic job. She did move to the Lansing area to attend Michigan State University. She received a bachelor's of arts, but then moved on to actually working toward and receiving a master's in fine arts and with a kind of a focus on painting and things of that nature. So she talked a little bit about what she's done locally with regards to art, arts and culture, and discussed a real desire to see that be advanced in the, in the Lansing area. And so with that being said, we did approve this particular appointment unanimously out of development and planning, and I would move the appointment.
All right, thank you, Vice President. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear or affirm that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and faithfully discharge the duties of office of Arts and Culture Commission Member according to best of your ability?
I will.
Very much.
Thank you.
While our clerk is doing that, I'll move on to our next one. We have an appointment of Christina Schmidgall as a member of the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority of Directors for a term to expire July 30th, 2027. Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So this is actually an appointment for, again, Christina Schmidgall as a member of the South Mar- South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors. This particular Board of Directors has a position for a local resident, but the majority of members are supposed to have some type of business interest in the development district or in that corridor, and she qualifies by way of actually working at a business at the intersection, I do believe, of South M O K and Holmes. Has a, again, real desire to see that particular corridor advanced, has actually been to a few of the corridor improvement authority meetings, which is awesome. And so with that said, we were very happy to support unanimously out of development and planning on March 5th. So with that said, I would move the appointment.
All right, thank you, Vice President. Do we have any questions or concerns? Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemn swear or affirm that you'll support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and will faithfully discharge the duties of office of South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors Member according to best of your ability?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Okay, while our clerk is taking care of that appointment, we will move down to number 13, grant acceptance, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISHDA Housing Development Fund Grant for Transformational Housing. Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we have vetted this as part of a couple different committee of the whole meetings. We had an extensive conversation today. I think there were a lot of questions, answers, comments, obviously. Sorry, obviously, this was the subject of much public comment as, tonight as well. What I wanna do is move the resolution to get it before the body, so that folks can make comments, you know, maybe final questions, whatever that might be, but I wanna make sure that we have the opportunity to consider, so I am going to move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. It sounded like it was eight zero to me, I didn't hear any opposed.
All right, next, we're to the grant acceptance, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, transformative community infrastructure for new city campus.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, so we are on, again, this is number 14. So what I'm gonna do again, so that this is before the body for consideration, I am going to move the resolution of grant acceptance.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Seeing, Councilman Kost.
So we are just moving this to be able to vote on it, correct?
No, so I'm sorry, I'm moving for the acceptance. So this is for approval.
Okay, okay.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Oppose.
All right, passes seven one.
Next, we're to Act 1, 2024 Purchase Agreement, Masonic Temple 217 South Capitol Avenue.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, so we had, we had some discussion in between Committee of the Whole and, and council, and we're not certain whether it was clear to all audiences, to all stakeholders, that what we were doing was moving the, a new resolution that actually reflects the drop in the purchase price of $3.65 million. What we have, so to be clear, what we are going to do is I'm gonna actually move for the acceptance, acceptance of a substitute. Again, that actually reflects the $3.65 million in addition to closing costs, and then we can speak briefly, and then I'll move it for, for approval. So I'm just moving for the acceptance of the substitute.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place, move to accept the substitute. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Oppose.
All right, seven one, okay, now Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so again, talked quite a bit at Committee of the Whole earlier this evening about this particular piece. Also spoke at length about this on February 12th, if you recall. We did move to table it at that time, which necessitated us untabling in order to address tonight, so I don't think there's a lot more to be said, so I will move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. As we spoke in the Committee of the Whole, there was, you know, with, you know, having a process of integrity and transparency and looking at options, I'm definitely supportive of city hall accepting of the money, as well as I'm not opposed to the Masonic Temple Building, but I do feel that we need to have open transparent process for our constituents, and so for that reason, I will not be supporting the purchase of the Masonic Temple Building at this time.
All right. Do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns? Vice President Hussein.
Just gonna reiterate what I said, as part of the Committee of the Whole, I wanna thank Mr. Boji, his entire team, they were, and, and, and there were some comments at the podium, and I know some were directed at me, and for good reason, in terms of, you know, some conversations that happened predating this meeting and some concerns I had. I would tell you that, and I, and I know everybody at this day has worked, you know, equally as hard, but over the past couple weeks, it has been, it's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of work, it's been a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings, a lot of pouring over material, a lot of asks, some concessions, and this particular team, I thought worked incredibly hard to be available, to consider some of the concerns that we had, and when I say we, frankly, I'm simply a representative of folks in the third ward, and so I was essentially channeling those, those concerns I was hearing to this particular team, and each and every time, they, you know, they, they, they met the call, frankly. One of the things too, again, when we talk about this needing to be, or at least the, the intention, right, that this, this was gonna be used on transformational municipal infrastructure, I also look at that as thi- this needs to be, any, any project, as an example, that stems from this, needs to be transformational. I personally, as we continue to vet this and discuss this, we talk about plunking $40 million into this particular facility, that is, that is not by definition transformational. That is making sure that we can move forward status quo, and I think about, again, future asks in term, in terms of economic development dollars. I, I think about, you know, truly catalytic projects here, the potential for catalytic projects here, and it, it's concerning that the, as an example, the state legislature could literally look across the street and say, remember when we, remember we approved those dollars, we're supposed to see something transformational, and that's what we got, more status quo. And so I really do believe, again, as I said in Committee of the Whole, that the eventual moving out of this to 217 South Capitol and kind of freeing this up for future development, I think that's the, the transformational piece, and so that doesn't happen without this, and so I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have another question or comment from Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much. Oh, I absolutely agree with you, Councilman Hussein, that we do need to move out of this building, and that's definitely, I wanna make sure I'm clear, is I think that, you know, all due respect to the constituents, that, you know, they need to be a part of the transparent process, so I'm not against the Masonic building, but to Councilman Kost's point, there, there was, and the changes to my point with the public service building, we, we haven't seen that process go from, from A to Z, and so by me saying I'm not in support of this purchase at this time, does not mean I'm saying to stay at this building whatsoever, that's not what I'm saying. So I just wanna make sure that was clear, and I appreciate everybody's involvement, and again, I've spoken very highly of Mr. Boji and his entire group. I think they're a wonderful organization who's doing good work, and nothing to do with them at all, and please don't, I wanna make sure that that's not what's being said. The issue is, as far as, I, no, I'm just saying, as far as what I'm saying to city...
Why, we're not gonna have back and forths.
Yeah, thank you, but as far as, as far as us as, as city hall, that's where constituents have voted for me, and my conviction is to have integrity and open transparency, so it's nothing to do with the development or the actual building, but the process, and so I just wanna make sure that's clear. I'm not saying that we shouldn't move out of this building, I would agree with everybody that, you know, this building has had its time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Brown. Do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns? All right, we do have a proper motion in place. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pallavani.
I have a question, and thank you for bringing that up, because I, I mentioned a Committee of the Whole that, you know, when, when we were looking at these development projects, it was a lot to take in, and as a new council member, you know, I'm, I'm getting my bearings, learning the processes, taking in all this information, and then expected to turn around within eight weeks' time and make a decision on how to spend $40 million that is taxpayer money. I know that, as I said, I was, you know, thankful that we had a couple of extra weeks to consider all of that information. I, now that this question has been raised, you know, I do think that for the sake of transparency with residents, constituents, I mean, we've heard time and time again, they, they simply don't understand the process. There's some missing pieces there for them. That's kind of how I felt coming in as a new council member in January. Of course, I asked my questions. Administration answered my questions, developers answered my questions, I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful that the city of Lansing is receiving this money from the state of Michigan. I do believe in development throughout the city, I do believe in development in downtown. I do think that, you know, asking for more time and transparency as we go into something like this is worthwhile. I do know that we have a date out there for these, that was set out there for October or September, correct me if I'm wrong, 2027. So when we are, you know, speaking with developers and, and, you know, doing our due diligence, and we're told that if, as soon as, you know, if, if this were to be voted forward, the project could be completed within 12 to 14 months, that's, that leaves a lot of time. I mean, we're talking... lot of time, I mean, we're talking about three years' time between, you know, now and October, September of twenty twenty seven. I do want to see a project move forward, I do believe it will happen, but I, I would feel more comfortable taking more time, making sure that we are going step by step in a, a transparent process for the public, for our residents, and explaining to them how we are taking in this information, the steps we're going through, and at, at the end of the day, it very well could be that this, yes, is the project that we end up with, and, and that will be okay with me at that time, I would feel better if we took a bit more time, so that, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate those comments. We have another one from Councilwoman Carter.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you, Councilman Brown, for also your statement and your question as well, I do appreciate the Boji Group for the dedication of answering all of my, my questions, as I mentioned in council, but I also want to make sure that we are also being transparent as Councilwoman Pelavaglou stated, I couldn't say it better, as newer council members, we want to do, make sure we do our due diligence, so I definitely would appreciate the, the openness, since we do have the time moving forward, so thank you again for the time, President Garza, but again, I want to be fully transparent with our constituents, and they need to be heard as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carter. It looks like Mayor Shore would like to...
Well, there were some questions about the process, and I know we've all had this conversation, and I've mentioned this publicly, but it's worth mentioning again, this was a result of a bid, a bid process that was done a few years ago now, when they came in, we had two bids on the new City Hall, there was a project from the Boji Group and a project from the Granger Group, Granger Family, I'm not sure of the name exactly, and the Boji Project was less expensive than the Granger one, the Granger one was, was more expensive, but at the time, we couldn't afford either of them, so both parties were told, we asked you to be creative, we asked you to come in with something that wasn't going to cost Lansing taxpayer dollars, and we, we told them both to, to rework. The Boji Group came back, and they came back with a proposal, the time they were proposing, it was before the, the bond had passed for, for police and fire, the public safety, so they were proposing two buildings for everything here, as well as the police station, the courts, the lockup, so we said, go, go, go figure out a better way to do this. In the meantime, our voters passed a hundred seventy-five million dollar bond, so then we learned that we only need to, to move City Hall, we don't need to move the courts and lockups and the police station, so we went back to...
All right, we're not going to go back and forth. Mr. Lynn, I gave him the opportunity to speak, I didn't give you the opportunity to speak, okay?
Motion for a vote.
I opened it up for questions and comments, I'm not going to be going back and forth with you, sir. Thank you.
So in the meantime, the, the millage passed, we needed less space, we needed significantly less space, so we went back to the Boji Group and said, you have been the, the picked bid because you were cheaper, although we can't afford what you have, they said that they had a smaller building, and they would advocate at the City Council, or City Council, at the state legislature for funding, that's what they did, they came back with a, an affordable product, and that's where we're moving forward. So it's been fluid, it's been fluid since the, the bid went out, it's been fluid to get to this point, and this is the one that, that we can afford, so we brought this forward to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Shore, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza, and I appreciate the comments by the mayor, though the timeline doesn't add up from when they purchased that building in twenty twenty-one to the bid process in twenty twenty-two, but then somehow they found that building, they, yeah, they bought it in twenty twenty-one.
They did, they, they bought all three buildings together.
Yeah.
Originally, they had proposed to us the two Cooley Buildings on the south side because of the space needs, when that no longer happened, they, they pitched this alternative building, they actually originally looked at the, the Cooley Temple Building for the Performing Arts Center, but it didn't fit, so we had told them no to that at the time, so they had, they have several buildings in their inventory, they had three that they had purchased from Cooley, and two of them didn't work, they swapped it out to the other one because of the space requirements.
I, I appreciate you explaining that. As the other members have said, I see no harm in taking a breath, looking at this in the light of day, talking to our community members more, they've had plenty to say, and we got inundated with a chain email from the chamber, and that's the voices we were hearing. The thing that you will notice on the address line, most of those people do not live here, and they want to make decisions about Lansing. We need to get into the neighborhoods, get down and dirty, talk to folks. I spent my time over in Fabulous Acres, as the mayor well knows, cleaning up trash along the railroad, you know, so I think that we should turn this down tonight, take a breath, talk to our community leaders, hear what they have to say. Again, we have until twenty twenty-seven, if the project is, can get done in a year, in a few months, there's no rush to do it right this second.
All right, thank you for your comments. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Alls in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Nay.
Okay, can we get a roll call?
Nay.
Councilmember Carter. Council President Garza.
Yes.
Council Vice President Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
No.
Councilmember Pelavaglou.
No.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Yes.
We have, we do not have the six votes, correct? We need, we need, this is five votes? Okay. We have four, four. Doesn't care. One, two.
All right, motion fails.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider.
We got four.
It's four, four.
Four, four.
One, two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to reconsider.
I'd like to move to reconsider and then table it if, to give the council the time it's asked for.
We got a motion on the floor to table.
We have reconsider.
Uh, reconsider, we got a motion to reconsider. Councilman J...
For clarity, President Garza, so you, we have to vote five votes to reconsider? So we can, so if I vote, if four people vote no, we don't have to reconsider? Because I know we have new council members here tonight.
Can we get a legal opinion on that?
Yeah. It's a five vote item.
It's a five voter, okay, so we have a motion on the, on the floor to reconsider. Alls in favor?
I think, does anyone need...
Any questions, concerns, comments for the reconsider?
So I can choose to deny, deny, and just keep my vote as, as it was, thank you.
I guess, maybe to clarify, I'm not asking council to reconsider their vote on the issue, but rather put the item back before us to table it, because now the purchase agreement that folks have advocated for more time is dead. So that's where I'm making the motion, so.
Did you understand that, Councilman?
Yes, but I think, you know, as I asked in the Committee of the Whole, if I wasn't to support this, what would take place, so they have to come back with a new process, so I'm fine with that, and there could be another purchase agreement in the future, but I'm fine with what I just voted for, I don't want to change that to something else, or I would have said that in the first place.
I understand, okay, we're going to have the city attorney read the ordinance.
Your rule for reconsideration is found in Rule twenty, or sorry, thirty-three of your rules of procedure, so when a question has been once decided, it shall be in order for any council member to move the reconsideration thereof, but no motion for reconsideration shall be in order unless made on the same day the vote was taken, or at the next regular meeting of council. No question shall be reconsidered more than once, a motion to reconsider the vote by which any ordinance, motion, or resolution has passed council shall require the votes of five council members to carry it.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider, do we have any additional questions or comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, so the proper motion is on the floor, all those in favor to reconsider, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state by saying aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so I guess, this is a failed, four, four. Okay, motion failed.
All right, the motion failed, then we're on to number sixteen, Brownfield Plan Seventy Seven, Amendment Number One, Five Hundred Block Redevelopment, and I did neglect to mention earlier the written public comment, all about that topic in support of it, six letters, or six emails.
Hey, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so you may recall, we actually had Chris Klein, we had Mr. Dominic Cochran with LPMC, and then we also had Dave Van Heren, who is an environmental consultant with Tri-Terr, we had them in on February twelfth, I had a pretty comprehensive presentation, I had a public hearing on February twenty-sixth, and it was actually referred back to development and planning, and we took this up on March fifth. Just very quickly, you may recall that the subject property, the Five Hundred Block, was purchased by a developer back in two thousand and nineteen, and then the Brownfield Plan, subsequent Brownfield Plan Seventy Seven was approved by, by both, sorry, the Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, as well as a city council at that time. The original development did include two, two phases, the first phase was really focused on the west side of the block along Capitol and Hillsdale, and included adaptive reuse of the Lake Trust Building, and new construction of a mixed-use building collectively called City View, and the total investment was slated to be thirty-two million dollars. The second phase, originally proposed, was, actually, I believe the developer was going to pursue a phase two of the development along South Washington Avenue, but the city was looking for a site for a music and arts facility, and the developer offered the site to the city, we did actually purchase that site last year for two million dollars. In any event, the site of the ovation, which is what we're talking about today, is within the eligible property established by, by that original Brownfield Plan Number Seventy Seven, it was discussed that new tax revenue paid by the private development is sufficient to reimburse eligible activities of City View and other eligible activities throughout the remainder of the block. There, the changes between the two plans, the purpose of the amendment, Amendment Number One, sorry, is really threefold, to first document reconfiguration of the two original parcels, which now contains three parcels, outline the proposed development and add an associated eligible activities at five twenty South Washington Avenue, and secondly, to update proposed eligible activity costs based on current redevelopment plans at all three parcels within the property, and lastly, to adjust the proposed tax increment, revenue capture schedule based on the current project timeline. Amendment One revises Phase One to a hundred and seventy-two residential units, up from a hundred and sixty, with a reduction of fifty-four zero one square feet of commercial space, some of which was used for residential storage, and the addition of Phase Two, which is the development of the fifty thousand eight hundred fifty-two square foot public music and arts facility along South Washington Avenue, and then subsequent relocation of the LPMC, the Lansing Public Media Center. Capital investment has doubled in the, with the amendment, sorry, from thirty-one point two million to sixty-two point three million, includes eight hundred thousand dollars of private investment, and some thirty million dollars of a public investment. Eligible activity costs have increased from nine million seven hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred forty-four dollars to twenty million dollars, I'm sorry, twenty million one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. The duration of the plan also is extended from the max of twenty-three years to the statutory maximum of thirty years, the total tax capture will go from eleven million twenty-four seven five six to twenty-one million nine hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. There were a number of questions that were presented on the twelfth, I do believe we received answers to all those questions, so with that being said, I would move the resolution.
All right, thank you, Vice President Hussein. We have a proper motion in place, do we have any questions, concerns, comments? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. You know, I struggled with this, this pilot. You have, if you go back and watch the video, October of twenty twenty-two, this was presented for seventeen point four million, and it was, quote, "the right size for our community", and two years later now, we're expanding it further, my concern is the burden that it's going to put on the taxpayers moving forward. If, no one wants to see this fail, but if it does, we're going to create a bigger burden, I think, by doing this. This building is going to be more expensive, there's going to be more trinkets, more things for, to get broken, as you, you know, increase the size and, and scope and, and quality, prices go up with that. I would much rather see a, a smaller version than the one that was proposed in twenty twenty-two, where we have the ovation, to see if it is successful. You know, my first car was not a brand-new vehicle like I have now, you know, you don't start out at the top when you start, we should live within our means, I am, I'm going to vote no on this.
All right, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, I support Councilman Cost's sentiment as well, not because I don't support entertainment and arts, but again, it's very clear, it was this much money, we have enough, things are changing, I think that Dominique is a great visionary for, for what he's doing, but to be responsible, I think we have whatever money we're going to, let's build what we have, and not go for additional funding, which was never discussed, you know, previously, and so for that reason, I'm going to no as well.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brown, do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
So similar to Ryan's comments, I was, I was back and forth on this as well, I will say, you know, in, in going through the amendments, and really considering what this potentially looked like with the amendment, for me, it really is about, about layering the sources of revenue, to make sure that, whether it be the construction costs, the debt service, that we have as many revenue streams as possible to pay that back. When we first were, you know, kind of talking about this, we kind of talked about, you know, this is really a regional asset, it should be supported by the region, and by amending this brownfield, that's actually exactly what we're doing, and so, you know, we're not just capturing growth on taxes from City of Lansing, but other local taxing, taxing jurisdictions as well. As a matter of fact, for every one dollar of city taxes that we're going to capture, we're going to capture two that aren't City of Lansing dollars, in order to pay back the, the construction costs and the debt service. So for me, it ju, I think it actually protects the City of Lansing taxpayer, I think it ensures that we can take some of the, actually, hopefully all of the annual revenue from things such as ticket sales, and actually use that for maintenance costs and, and putting dollars into reserves and things like that, so I think financially, it just makes more sense, I think, for the taxpayer of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Nice.
Yes, Councilwoman Pelavaglou.
Thank you, so just, I'm asking a question based off of what you said, so you're saying that voting yes on this would actually protect the taxpayers, how would the taxpayers not be protected, should, you know, should it not pass?
My concern, and I, and I understand we have a companion resolution that was brought forth by Mr. Cost, the companion resolution that we're set to consider has, does not have the force of law, right, it's simply an intent, we can't bound another council by resolution to, to that type of action, but it does demonstrate an intention, I think, based on this particular iteration, that this is never to be subsidized by the general fund, and if it does get to the point where this is operating in the black and this is subsidized by the general fund, it's our intention that we go to the, we go, go to market with this particular asset. By, for me, again, by adding an additional revenue stream to pay back the debt service, I don't know if I'm making sense or not, but to pay back that debt service, it moves us further away from this kind of danger zone, in terms of having to use that general fund to actually pay that debt service.
Councilman Jackson, and then Councilman Brown.
Thank you, I just want to express my support, because I'm mainly tired of having to go everywhere for anything besides Lansing, being from here is always looking around for other places, and I understand that, you know, there is a risk of some financial loss for the city, and, you know, they're worried about it becoming another Lansing Center, or, or the ballpark, but I think about the Lansing Center and the ballpark, and I can't really imagine the city without those, and I understand we pay a little bit, but still, so if, I know that if we don't support the project fully, then it decreases, in my opinion, the chances of it happening, and I do want to see it happen, so I'm supporting it today.
All right, thank you, Councilman J... Consulman Jackson, and then Consulman Brown, and then Consulman Cost.
Thank you. Excuse me, I, I agree, but the challenge is, we've been told it wasn't going to be a hundred percent, to Consulman Cost's point, self-sustainable, you know, we had, you know, our last cycle of council and President Wood was in place, and so now it's saying, well, if we don't get this additional, and that tells me there's a risk that it's subsidy, which was my concern from the very beginning, and then we went and began to document, you know, that the golf course, Lansing Center, all these other places are being subsidized. So for that very reason, to say now we have to come back to get additional, when we've already have the funding, and without this additional brownfield, the project will go forward, and it should be good for the twenty million dollars that we said we had, and that's how much it was for the big bells and whistles in the beginning. It was, you know, I don't remember exact numbers, but it was lower, maybe fifteen, sixteen, thirteen million, but if we did the, the, the big bells and whistles, it would be twenty. Well, now we have the twenty, and now we're saying, well, we need twenty-seven for the big bells and whistles, and now we're risking, you know, that we might have to subsidize. That was a concern from the very beginning. Now, it was, you know, Dominic was down here, and he gave, gave his word, and the administration, everyone said, no, this is, you know, going to be self-sustainable. So now, why has that confidence changed? For that reason, if you tell me one thing and you change to another, I cannot support that, even though I support Ovation, and I'm from Lansing, and I believe in Austin culture, and I even played in the band with Adam Hussein on the concert, we came down here. But I can't, in my role, being voted for by the constituents in all good conscience, say, let's get additional money to get additional bells and whistles for something that, if we look at the history of Lansing, we've had to subsidize and go in the general fund. And the brownfield is taxpayer dollars, whether it's regional or local, somebody is still paying that bill. So if we, as a community, and the constituents, tell me we want to subsidize five hundred thousand or a million dollars to keep the Ovation, that's fine, but, but, but that's not been the sentiment. With the number seventeen, City Council Statement for Ovation being self-sustaining, I am going to support that one hundred percent, because if we don't, we need to have the option to sell, and if, if the community says we should sell it, great, I will support that. But if you say, hey, we don't want to sell it, it's a great thing, and we need to subsidize the four hundred thousand, then I'll be supporting the subsidy and working with the administration and saying, you know, this is what we need to do to keep the Ovation moving forward. We were told, I was told, we were told, you know, it was fundraising, we had all the money, we had support from the federal and state, and everything was secured over a year ago, and now we're coming back with another tool to say we need to reduce the risk, and that's not what's shared with me, so that's the only reason that I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Consulman Cost, and then Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, thanks, President Garza. I just, I want to be clear, I, Consulman Jackson, you had mentioned that you were worried about it not happening. The Ovation is going to happen. What we're talking about here is, what version are we going to get? And I am saying, I, I'm talking about the original version that was presented, and even if you took up this brownfield, and I had this discussion with several folks, why not keep that same plan and take less bonds out on the Act Thirty-One? You know, I am concerned, because I've been here, my family's been here for four generations. We have seen the Lugnitz Stadium, it's going to be a big moneymaker for the city. Now we're dumping in lots of money to subsidize at the Lansing Center, that they affectionately called the, the pole barn, that's going to make a ton of money. Now we're subsidizing it at some two million dollars. The golf course, hundred thousand dollars in subsidies. My concern is, with two increases of five percent last year and this year on your property tax, add in the new public safety millage that's on our property tax, we have people that can't afford to live here anymore. When the hell is it going to end? Excuse my language, but folks are frustrated, and I can't in good conscience vote to add or possibly add even more debt onto that. The Ovation's going to happen, but I don't want the bigger version, I want to see success out of the seventeen point four million dollar version first, to justify that bigger version.
All right, thank you, Consulman Cost. Vice President Hussein.
No, I think everybody's, you know, the reality, and it probably makes me a weak councilmember, but, you know, I, I never try to allow or influence or convince anybody. So I trust people have done their homework, they have talked to their respective constituents. I just want to make sure that when we talk about, that things are accurate. When we talk about the conversation we had back in two thousand and twenty-three, when we were contemplating the sale, or I'm sorry, the purchase, rather, we, Dominic Cochran and the LPMC, what they did was they presented a plan that they could, they could fund with the dollars on hand, but if I recall correctly, part of that conversation was, we're going to do a couple of things, we're going to continue to explore further tools that might be able to, to be leveraged, and we will continue to try to fundraise to, to bring across the goal line the highest and best version of this particular development. And so I think that's what they did, and I just, I'm not trying to influence anybody, I just want to make sure that we're fair to that conversation. I think from the outset, they had said, look, this is, this is what we can fund, but we want the highest and best version because we think that is what's sustainable well into the future. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, questions? All right, seeing none, we, we do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Oh, we need a roll call, I guess. Roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember.
Councilmember Carter. Council, President Garza.
Yes.
Council, Vows President Hussein.
Ah, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
No.
Councilmember Vernicle.
No.
Councilmember Spatterford.
Yes.
We have four, no, I didn't do Councilmember Brown. Sorry.
Nay.
Okay. And we got four, four, then, motion fails.
Okay.
Then we're next to items, City Council Statement for the Ovation to be self-sustaining.
Consulman Cost.
Yeah, so this was a resolution that the administration had worked with me and legal on. Essentially, it is non-binding legally in any way, but it does point that this council, this current council's view is, if the Ovation were to ever become a burden on the tax rolls and the general fund, that we would want it to be sold, but again, this has no force of law, this is just stating what our, at the time, what our collective opinion was, and the mayor had graciously agreed with that opinion as well, he doesn't want to burden taxpayers, and made that very clear when he asked, you know, if we wanted to do a resolution, so that's how this was born.
All right, thank you, Consulman Cost. So, are you moving the resolution?
I would move the resolution.
Okay. Do we have any questions or concerns regarding the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
All right, seven, one.
Okay, next we're to ordinance for introduction, which I need to read into the record. Councilmember Hussein introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing to add Chapter Eight Eight Seven of Lansing Codified Ordinances, Section Eight Eight Seven Point Oh One to Eight Eight Seven Point Oh Seven, to authorize a payment in lieu of taxes program in conformity with the State of Michigan Property Tax Exemption Alternative, authorized under nineteen sixty-six P.A. Three Four Six, as amended specifically MCL One Two Five Point One Four One Five A, which permits a city to elect to consider a payment in lieu of taxes for a housing project developed or rehabilitated for workforce housing after the passage of an enabling ordinance. The ordinance is read for the first time by its tile and referred to the Committee of Development and Planning.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Well, I think Mr. Jackson said it all, and so what we are doing is, we are setting a public hearing again for March eighteenth, seven P.M. We want to thank Raleigh Van Fossen for being here earlier to present. There were a number of questions that were asked in D and P on March fifth, and so anticipating similar questions, he answered those as part of his presentation, so with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Okay, next we're to speaker registration for public comment and city government-related matters. For anyone, if you'd like to speak on city government-related matters, you have about thirty seconds here to complete the yellow form, if you not have already done so. And with that, we're to reports of city officer boards and commissions, communication petitions, other city-related matters.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move that items be considered as read a full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
All right, thank you, Vice President. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes.
Items from the City Clerk, Minutes of Boards and Commission.
Place on file.
Executive Directive Twenty Twenty Four Zero One, Bidding Requirements in Local Labor Preference for Purchasing Subcontractors.
Committee of the whole.
Lansing City Hall Project Purchase Agreement.
Committee of the whole and internal auditor.
Items of the mayor, grant application, Michigan Department of Transportation, local bridge program.
Committee of the whole, internal auditor.
Setting the hearing for the committee development block grant, small business support grant.
Committee of the whole.
Act Fifty-One, Street Certification, Red Cedar Development, Cascade Boulevard and Red Cedar Parkway.
City operations.
Act Fifty-One, Street Decertification, various street totals of nineteen hundred and forty-three feet.
City operations.
Act Thirty-Five, Street Certification, Riverfront Drive, for a total of fifteen hundred and thirty-six feet.
City operations.
Appointment of Jack Brower for consideration as Lansing member of the Joint Building Authority Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
City operations.
Appointment of Carrie Tomac as a business representative, member of the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board of Directors for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Development and planning.
Appointment of Byron Haskins as at-large member of Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Equity, diversity, inclusion.
Appointment of Peter Mormon as member of Saginaw Street Corridor, approved and authority board of directors for a term expired June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Development and planning.
Setting a hearing on a noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers' request to allow the Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project.
City operations.
And then we have the noise permit for the same project.
City operations.
Business amendment carried forward for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four.
Committee of the whole, internal auditor.
And then we setting a public hearing of a noise special permit for Michigan Department Transportation, request to allow for work activities to take place in I four ninety-six U.S. One Twenty-Seven.
City operations.
Communication petition, affidavit disclosure for Timothy Martin Loasco, Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
Then we have an affidavit disclosure, Christine Chilis of the Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
We have the Choose Lansing Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Annual Report.
Place on file.
Communication from Mitch Rice, supporting draft signed ordinance as before Planning Commission.
Development planning, place on file.
Communication from Deborah Malkany, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, proposed realignment and removal of boulevards.
Place on file.
Notice from the Liquor Control Commission, Rassful Vineyard, request for new off-premise tasting room and license.
City operations, place on file.
Another notice from Liquor Control Commission, Lansing Brewing Company, request of transfer membership by N Detroit Liquid Ventures.
City operations, placed on file.
All right, no motion to excuse. We're to remarks by councilmembers.
Do we have any additional remarks by councilmembers? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore. Okay, no remarks.
So we're public comment and city government related matters. Our first speaker is David Ellis, followed by Willie Hobbs.
Very quickly, I just wanted to clarify a mistake I had made. Mr. Genalotzi let me know out in the hallway that actually, the cost, I didn't take into account the office space in his development, and the cost per unit is actually two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So I went ahead and quickly did some math on my phone, and fifty-eight percent of his transformational housing project is actually housing, so just to have that on the, on the record, it's less than two-thirds housing in a housing project. I'm actually here to talk about the Michigan Avenue redevelopment that's starting today, actually. It's whiplash. Last meeting, I was talking about the MLK redevelopment and how fantastic of a project that is, and how transformational that's going to be for the downtown neighborhood, and now here I am saying that a bike lane project is reprehensibly bad, it is criminally bad. I can't, I can't even begin to fathom the things I'm seeing in this design. I've been involved with this project for the past two years now, and have been following this idea of redeveloping the avenue since two thousand and eighteen, when there was the Imagine the Ave pilot event on the two thousand and twenty-one hundred block. So it's been a long time coming to see this come to fruition, and we're getting nothing. We're getting, I won't get too much into the technical details of the project here, but the bike lanes have been reduced to an expanded sidewalk with virtually zero differentiation between the spots that the bikes are allowed and the spot that the people are allowed, which negates the entire purpose of a bike lane. That, that does, that is not a bike lane, that is a, that is a sidewalk that you're permitting bikes to ride on, which defeats the entire point of me wasting all of my time being involved in this. There, and at intersections, they've sort of invented an entirely new and terrifying form of traffic design in which they put the stop line for cars in front of the crosswalk, so cars are being told, but like, you are supposed to be stopping on your car on top of the crosswalk, which is inane. It's, it's disheartening. Like, when I was at the meeting, I, I love talking, as many of you have probably noticed, I can usually always come up with something to say. I was just, I was just walking around emotionless, because I just, thousands of hours I've seen between myself and fellow advocates, like collaboratively, trying to push for a good design, and it, it was just nothing. It was, it was appalling. It's, thankfully, public service has shown to be willing to make some concessions to the design, but the fact that there are issues in this that we saw last year, that I have, I brought in front of council last year, last, the exact same issues that are still present in it, this is an unusable design, and nothing's been done. It's, this is the road that leads from the steps of the state's Capitol, all the way down through a vibrant eastside neighborhood to a campus of five thou, fifty thousand students every year, and it's being treated as if it's just some sort of side road. It's disgusting. There's, there's four parallel lanes on Saginaw in that portion, there are three parallel lanes of Interstate four ninety-six, and somehow they could not find the space to redirect potentially some traffic. There didn't even need to be that, there's enough room on the corridor, they just weren't willing to put the effort in to actually locate the space for cycle lanes, so they had to put this hack sack together plan, which went over budget and had to be scaled back. So I'm sort of, I'm out of options, I'm sort of begging you guys, please, if there's any, like, authority you have on this, step in and say, we need to, we need to go back to the drawing board because you did not listen to anyone with this design. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie Hobbs, followed by Sheila Contreras.
Hello, my name is Willie Hobbs, and I'm down here, this, I'm going to call this Part One, because I ain't going nowhere. I'm originally from Mississippi, I'm a shell copper son, down in the sticks, where the government and the plantation owner abused and misused me, and I came up here to better myself, and I've been working hard all my life, doing any and everything I possibly can to make a honey-dipping living, keeping robbers and killing and selling drugs, and lived up here in this house, in the city of Lansing. Wrote a letter to me and my son, and told me that I had to clean up some debris in my yard, indoor-type furniture and outdoor-type furniture, and some debris. But, but it all started from, from one couch, and I had the proof, I want to show y'all some, and show y'all, since I'm not educated, didn't go to school, I want to prove to y'all. I want to prove to y'all that I'm not stupid. Now, if y'all look at these pictures right here, I want you to see them. And then, when you look at them, when I come back, I want to ask some questions. And I'm gonna see how honest y'all are here. I took the oath, same oath the police took, and I'm an honest man and I tell the truth. Now, I'm gonna show you these pictures, make sure you see them. And then I'm gonna bring you some more pictures. And then, I want to ask some questions and I hope y'all be honest because I'm an honest man. And a whole lot of people in this city know that I am an honest man because I work for a lot of folks. All I did with, they know me good. Now, I'm gonna see he's wrong. I don't know, do you know it, ma'am? I tried to reach out to you, but they said I had to get on the internet. I don't know nothing about no internet. I know about picking cotton, chopping cotton, and then taking advantage of it, then take our tax, working me all them years down in the state of Mississippi. And then, when we got ready to file taxes off the plantation, they changed their name so we couldn't go after them. This same stuff is going on right now, but in a different form. And I'm gonna prove it. I'm gonna prove it to the government that I've been mistreated. They put almost $4,000 on my taxes this year. I can't pay it as it is. I cannot pay four more dollars.
Next is Sheila Contreras, followed by Deborah Malkahy.
Good evening. I've been a resident of the West Side neighborhood of Lansing since the 20th century. That's 25 years now. I was stunned to learn of the planned destruction of the medians on MLK Boulevard. The city did little to advise community of this massive profound change to our landscape and failed to take seriously its responsibility for transparency. To date, the city has provided no evidence of a need for this drastic change, the elimination of the boulevards from Kalamazoo to Ionia. We can only speculate about how beneficial it will be to future developers on the new MLK frontage. Further, the city has neglected the health, safety and quality of life of pedestrians, particularly in regards to the status of MLK Boulevard as a route to school. The proposed reconfiguration is myopic and frankly will introduce danger. The plan has not pursued excellent research on design, land use and safety as far as we can tell. Any project of this scope and occurring on a route to school must prioritize and centralize the safe passage of pedestrians and schoolchildren. As far as we know, no traffic studies and no extensive crash data analysis have been conducted. This is shocking considering that schoolchildren cross MLK regularly. It is established in the literature of traffic studies and urban planning and I just want to say, I should not have to be doing this research. This should have been done by the city. It's well-known that four-way intersections are the most dangerous for pedestrians. T-intersections are safer. Right now, MLK crossing involves two T-intersections. The city plans to convert these to the more dangerous four-way. Why? It's for the cars, the city tells us. Additionally, the introduction of commercial activity on arterial roads is linked to increased crashes as it brings slower-moving traffic into the stream and increases pedestrian activity. The city of Lansing has apparently given no consideration to the impact of the proposed built environment on pedestrian and school travel safety. In whose communities is the safety of pedestrians and schoolchildren of so little regard, of no special consideration? Lansing is a Title I school district with high poverty, majority-minority student population. Many of our students already live in precarity. We have in our local history tragic accidents involving vehicles and pedestrian schoolchildren and some of that was because the city did not keep up, the roads did not shovel the walkways, kids had to walk in the streets. In whose communities does this not rise to the level of local government interest? Speaking of commercial activity, I have a map here, I'm gonna leave for you, detailing the commercial property owned by a single property owner on the east side of MLK. This is also the side of the street where the city of Lansing plans to redistribute the land that is freed up by the demolition of the medians. I urge you to look carefully at this map and notice the story it tells of a plan that seems to have been long in the making. The red area is owned by one developer and that land used to have affordable housing that was demolished and the land has lain empty awaiting, we don't know what, oh, maybe the planned reconfiguration of MLK, which certainly seems to promote and protect commercial interests. Meanwhile, residents, the first person, they didn't have to do the timer, I just have a couple paragraphs. Meanwhile, residents on the west side will have MLK compressed onto their side of the street with trees and green space removed. Entire five planned lanes will be pushed right up against the west side of the street where people live. The noise barrier provided by the tens of trees will be gone. The surrounding residential area will experience increased noise levels. And it's called MLK Boulevard. Did not one person consider the name of that street when they made this plan? And here is the map. Please, please, see the story.
Deborah Malkahy, followed up by Christine Green Shabansky.
Excuse me, would the clerk or an assistant like to take this, please?
Yeah, can you go grab that one?
Thank you, Deborah Malkahy, good evening. I too wish I was not here. Hopefully, if you've read the communication I sent you, because as you've all heard tonight, it's being put in the file. City told me there were three reasons for the removal of the boulevards and the reconfiguration. The first one was the signal light timing is not good at the crosswalk. This has been known for years. Why don't you change the signal light timing? The second one was to protect the church, the Southern Triangle. They put in guardrails. Regardless of what is done, change the speed limit from 45 back to what it was and reduce it. And the third reason was the one-way to two-way street conversion of West Ottawa and West Alleghen. If you can't make those turns, you shouldn't be driving. And then they tell me, there are semis going through there. It's not a truck route. Semis shouldn't be driving on West Alleghen and West Ottawa. The roads are not designed for truck routes. It's for economic development. It's not for the residents. Those are the reasons that were given to me. To date, where is the justification? It doesn't exist. The city has no studies or none that they shared with us to tell us what this is about. The city was caught after an unsuccessful May 2023 bid for this project. The city has been in discussions with the state of Michigan since 2017 and we just learned, some of us learned, in December 2023. There are many residents in this city who have no idea about this project because they have not been notified, nor is the city planning to notify them. An extensive amount of resources have been spent, bad blood for the community, and the city has either no history or a selective history. Where were you 30 years ago when this MLK was expanded? I've lived in this community over 40 years and I, as an adult, and others in the community were living here. Does the city seek input from us? No. Did the city review the prior work, the studies that MDOT contemplated and completed prior to the reconfiguration of the early 90s when they did this? Maybe, but it doesn't seem like they learned anything from it. Please, please, I implore you, stop the process now. When existing cities, as ours have, not been able to maintain roadways, why are we looking to take on more roadways to maintain? I really don't get it. Now, if any of you have not heard or read the viewpoint that was in the State Journal this weekend, I suggest you look at it. It was by John Eichert. If it was not a secret or a concern, then it would be a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing. And then if you look at the boulevards, you'll see it's staked and there's flagging out there. MDOT wrote me this afternoon. I'm unaware of the thing currently going on that you've talked about. There is no, there are no active permits. Who's staking this? Who's doing this? To what avail? Why are you doing this to our community again and again? I implore you, stop the project. Thank you.
Next is Christopher Green Shabansky, followed by Alexis Jones.
Hi, I'm a little nervous. Excuse me. So I, I guess I'm here to ask for help. I am, I'm not sure how to begin this. So I guess I was hit by a car and then I was hit by another car. It happened four times in five years. Hit my car or pushed off the road while I was biking in a bike lane or on the river trail. And so I guess I'm concerned about pedestrianization or I'm not concerned about pedestrianization and I'm looking forward to more pedestrianization. We have a lot of places that are cool to go to in Lansing, but it's, it's really easy to get through them, a lot easier to get through them than to get to them. So I'm really in favor of projects like the MLK conversion, going from a six to seven lane highway with a median. I think going to a five lane with a median is a really good idea. I hope that if you have any, I don't know, influence at all or anyone who's listening to this, please leave feedback saying that including the median, which is one of the options, is a great idea because I think less pavement for people to cross down there is great. I've also heard you talk about the Michigan Avenue project. So you heard from another person earlier and I guess to kind of echo that, I've seen the project and my concerns there are that we're forcing pedestrians and bikes to share the same space, which is dangerous to pedestrians and it doesn't give very much space to bikes. Another concern is that if we have any stores that want to set things out in front of their business, that takes more space from pedestrians who are now in conflict with bikes again. Also, the double stop line was mentioned. This is something that is in Frandor and I don't think that we should be looking at Frandor as an example of great pedestrian infrastructure. Asking people to stop and then stop in a crosswalk, I think is a very bad idea. So I'm hoping that we have some more, I don't know, time or some ideas or some way to ask them to go back to the drawing board for that. I know that your average, like, I bike. Once I healed, I was back on my bike to get back to work and to do the things I need to do. Like, I know you're always going to have people who look like me, who are this tall, who are male, who are just going to keep biking. Maybe we shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't. But, you know, I would like to be able to take a nine-year-old to any place in Lansing on a bike that isn't the River Trail. The River Trail is great, but you have to drive to it. I would like to just be able to take her downtown. I'd like to be able to take her on Michigan's Avenue next year. I think that would be a great thing. I think that Michigan Avenue can be a great place to go to or a great place to go through. And right now, it's a great place to go through because of the decisions that we're making and I really hope that we can look at that and maybe make it one of our cool pedestrianized zones. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Alexis Jones, followed by Linda Applin. And the gentleman's packet has been given to each of the council members at the beginning of the meeting.
Good evening. Once again, Alexis Jones, this is all, I'm a citizen of here, this great city. I have, everyone should receive a packet. This is concerning the roadside memorials. This is my third request for councilmen and the mayor to, somebody to talk to me about it, to see what we can do to kind of clean up this monumental problem that we have here. They're all, they're in all the wards. There's a short list in this packet that with all, that I found of these memorial sites. I mean, they're in Old Town, they own freeways, they're in front of graveyards, they own bike trails, they're in people neighborhood, they own major highways. I mean, there is a list, this is a short list that I found. There are more here in this great city. So I'm asking folks to, don't be paralyzed in making, not making a decision. At least try to come and meet with me and talk to me. I mean, we talking about our city. I'm responding with the Detroit Free Press article about the city. I think this is a great city. I've been here 37, 38 years and this is a great city. And I don't look at this as a problem, I look at it as a challenge and a challenge is an opportunity for us to grow. So look at this proposal, contact me. We come to you, you're probably asking the question, what does we come to you? We are event planners. I had a business, well, I was in the Oakhamus Meridian Mall for 14 years and I just moved back to Lansing. And I see this as the opportunity. We did all kinds of events, at least talk to me, at least try to see what I'm saying and see what we can do to make the city look, to make up the cosmetic of the city, make it look better. You're gonna keep hearing from me. I'm not gonna stop coming. I'm not here to badmouth anyone. I just here want to work together with people. So roadside memorials, we all seen them and we pretend like we don't see them. They're there. A lot of the things with the city, the city have, mayor, you have a lot of departments underneath you. I think that we can work together and get these things downsized. There's a lot of different things that's not in the proposal, the original proposal that I have given it to you guys, but if you sit and talk to me, there are a lot of things that really, it's a lot of things in this proposal that really can help. You know, we talk about gun violence, you know, the Oxford School shooting is on now and part of this proposal was with the gun violence. And it's not in it, but someone please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Applin, followed by Norma Baer.
Hello, my name is Linda Applin and what I wanted to discuss today, or at this point in time, is the brownfield plans. First, I would like to state that more or less I'm tired of giving my money to specious projects. Some of the projects are really questionable. Two, I'm tired of having services, my services, reduced to me because of tax maintenance in terms of projects. You know, somebody's got to pay for the services and the question becomes, where are you going to get the money? Thus, I believe projects approved for inclusion in brownfield plans should be assessed for police protection and fire protection. Why should I have to continue to support these projects? I would also state that the city needs an assessment of whether or not use of the brownfield projects actually works. I mean, exactly what do they contribute to the city? I have not seen anybody come up with a report specifically identify what they have contributed to the city and how much that has cost us.
Thank you. Next is Norma Baer, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
I'm still Norma Bauer and I know you can say that if you try "Bauer," it's pretty easy. Okay, so I want to suggest a change in council rules because the recording secretary puts out a sign when we first walk into the room, the committee of the whole, to sign if you intend to make a comment. And so we all obediently signed it and then they did what they're supposed to do, that they put it on her desk. So that's why, President Garz, you did not have a list of who was going to speak or how many were or what their names were. So I would suggest that you change that. That's been the practice here. It's not the practice at city council and I don't know why it's different, but I just know that you can change council rules if you choose to. And secondly, I wonder if you violated the Open Meetings Act when you had a conference without the microphones out in the back room? Because I went to the training that you gave yourself, the annual training that you're required to take every year about the Open Meetings Act. And it seems to me you did and it seems to me that that's on the record. And I want to suggest that you look at all the cities who are either Lansing size or larger, who have adopted all free bus transportation because it's more efficient, it's more effective, they save money on it. We're addicted to fossil fuel transportation and we don't need to do it. It's not, it's not healthy, it's not good. People get to work and everything.
Thank you. Loretta Stanaway, followed by Taylor Klein. Loretta Stanaway, followed by Taylor Klein.
Okay, a couple of people tonight have mentioned gun violence, and again, I think Ryan Kost encountered that firsthand in the last several days, when he encountered a gunshot wound victim outside of a quality dairy and was required to step in and intervene in that situation. So what can we do? We talk a lot about caring about gun violence, we talk about all these different programs that we have in play. Most of them are ineffective, most of them just plain and simply are not working. We have not put our money where our mouth is. If we are serious about doing something about gun violence, I have some suggestions. First, we need to hire more police. We need to put police and fire first. I know they get the biggest chunk of our budget as it is, but they need to get a bigger chunk. The first responsibility of a city to its citizens is to protect them. That's police, and that's fire. Second is roads and sidewalks and public service. We are getting fewer and fewer services for more and more tax dollars out of our pockets every time you turn around. If you want to put your money where your mouth is, we need to bump up the wages and the benefits. We need to offer a housing allotment to police recruits. We need to start enforcing laws. We need to start saying to the criminals out there, we are not standing for this. We are coming for you. Know it. We are out there, we're gonna get you. If you're a juvenile delinquent and you're over, say, sixteen, for instance, we're gonna charge you as an adult. We're gonna untie the hands of the police and let them go after the criminals. We're going to permit them to do traffic stops, because a lot of times when they do traffic stops, they find guns and drugs. We are going to look at some things that I've suggested in the past that we could use to improve our services and reduce our costs. For the fire department, we need to talk about medical taxis that could be run by an agency like Mid-Michigan, the MMR group, and have paramedics and EMTs respond to all those nuisance-level calls where somebody really just needs a ride to the hospital and doesn't have a car, so they call for an ambulance. We need to talk about reserve police officers, and don't tell me we cannot do it in Michigan because my calls will stop it. Jackson just did it. We also need to stop engaging in class warfare, and by this I mean, we are funding the creative class on the backs of the working class, and we cannot continue to do that. We are having residents flee this community because crime and taxes are pushing them out. We cannot continue to support the core downtown on the backs of these taxpayers. It is not sustainable. Thank you.
Next is Taylor Klein, followed by Blake Cassidy.
My name is Taylor Klein. I'm here today as a City of Lansing resident and as a parent to express my concerns regarding a disc golf course that's being installed near the Fenner Nature Preschool. While I understand the desire to enhance recreational opportunities in our community, the potential risk to the safety of our children cannot be ignored. Our children spend the majority of their day outdoors, snow, rain, or shine, exploring, learning, and growing. Introducing a disc golf course nearby could put them at risk of injury from flying discs or potential collisions. The idea of strangers mingling with our children in such close proximity is deeply unsettling. Our preschoolers are vulnerable, and we must do everything in our power to ensure their protection. Allowing unrestricted access to the course poses a serious risk of injury to these children who inadvertently stray, who may inadvertently stray into the path of flying discs or encounter unfamiliar individuals. As parents, our top priority should be the safety and well-being of our children. We cannot ignore the potential dangers this course presents. Therefore, I urge the City Council to consider implementing measures to limit public access to the disc golf course during school hours. By designating specific times for gameplay outside of school hours, we can mitigate the risk of potential accidents and ensure the safety of our youngest community members. Thank you.
Next is Blake Casey, followed by Teresa Casey.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to stand here and have the freedom of speech to be able to talk about our most vulnerable, in my opinion, and that is the three- to five-year-olds. And I was not, I've got the privilege to listen to a lot of people that have come from Lansing, born and raised in Lansing. I, however, is not. I've only been a resident of the Lansing area for about three and a half years. I was born and raised in Ottawa County and had the privilege of a very extensive Parks and Rec, as well as a nature preschool that our community had access to. There are six nature preschools in the entire state of Michigan. Lansing is proudly has one of those now. We were elated, as a family, to be able to find that in a community and in a nation where it's extremely difficult to find childcare that is reliable and affordable. The disc golf course is something that I feel is wanted and needed. However, the restrictions and the, we've been met on deaf ears with the restrictions of the timing for disc golfers to be able to play at the same time as the kids are attending the school. This, from what we have found, would be the very first disc golf course that shares property, whether private or public, to a school or a church, that did not have restricted hours in the entire state of Michigan. So I ask and urge that you guys at least please listen, be open to listening, and to be able to looking at having those restrictions so that we can protect our community and our children.
Thank you. Next is Teresa Casey, followed by Emily Shup Parker.
Hi there. My name is Teresa Casey. As you heard others talk about, I'm also going to be talking about the Fenner Nature Preschool and the disc golf course that is planning to go in the spring. So as Blake mentioned, there is not a single disc golf course in Michigan that does not restrict disc golf playing hours during school hours when the two share property. Parents proposed restricting the disc golf course hours, and we were told by the Parks and Rec Director that the city is not interested in limiting park hours for a group of people, and that group of people would be the disc golfers. However, you could easily say that implementing a disc golf course actually limits the public's ability to use the public space. There's a disc golfer, his name is Lucas Miller, and he stated in an article reprimanding the disc golf community, "I'm hogging acres of taxpayer-funded land, throwing borderline life-threatening toys near people's heads, and wouldn't you know it, none of them signed up for this when they loaded up the kiddos in the minivan earlier that day for some fun." And the PDGA, which is the Professional Disc Golf Association, suggests, when considering a disc golf course proposal, if the community is most interested in serving kids from nearby elementary schools, then a long rugged course is not a good choice. In light of these statements, I'd like you to contemplate how a disc golf course is an equitable project for both three-and-a-half, two-, five-year-old children and the general public. We've also proposed that the holes be put in the back section of the property due to concerns about the disc golfers using substances while disc golfing. We've been told that disc golf is too popular. Your opinions that disc golfers drink and use substances when golfing is dated and wrong, and the course will rarely be used during the week because people work. The 2025 Parks and Rec master plan shows that walking paths and green spaces are the most requested by Lansing citizens. Disc golf ranked in line with gardening and playgrounds. So both of those, we requested in consideration as a public use for the property. Never once have we said that this cannot be publicly used. We just want it to be safe for the kids and for the public in general. And in regard to substance use during golfing and the lack of use during the week, last Wednesday, the sixth, I went at 10:00 a.m. to both Grandwoods Park, which is an eighteen-hold disc golf course, and, just for good measure, I went to the Trinity Church eighteen-hold golf, disc golf course to see what they were like. On both courses, there were disc golfers out in thirty-seven-degree cloudy weather, and every trash was full of alcohol, cigarettes, and substances, and this was not just in the trash, it was also on the property as well. And this is in the off-season, so I'm just wondering, what is this going to be like during the peak season? And I'd like to ask you, if this gives you any pause at all, or any concern for safety or for our community's future generation, I'm just asking that you would please talk to the Parks and Rec Director and show some compassion towards the parents at Fenner Nature Center. I don't have a countdown, but while I have, oh, I do have a countdown. I just wanted to show proof that I did indeed go to those places and took several pictures of all of the substances that were in and around the grounds at those disc golf courses. And these are just a couple photos to show you how much of the land that the Fenner Nature Preschool actually utilizes. It's not something where they're just in a vicinity of the space, but they're hiking, exploring, and using the acreage. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next is Nick Zandi, followed by Michael Lynn.
I think you skipped me.
Oh, wow. Are you Emily?
Yes.
I apologize.
No worries. I know it's late. Thank you for bearing with us. Good afternoon, good evening, I guess. My name's Emily Shup Parker. I'm also with the Fenner Nature Preschool parents. I have two girls who attend there, and I can't speak highly enough of the school and how much time they spend outside in nature, making the space, a play space for them, such as like jumping off a tree or a tree root. So they've just had a wonderful experience. Like some of the other parents here tonight, I'm here to express concerns with the proposed disc golf course that's being suggested to go on the same property, a sycamore. I've already attended two park board meetings, you can see my comments there. I have emailed Mayor Shore a couple times, I've emailed Brett a couple times, I sent an email to you all, I think, last week, and I attended, or sorry, not me, my partner attended the community meeting that was in February, just to raise concerns. And just overall, I just want to express, there's been a lot of confusion and lack of transparency in this process. There, the meeting that was supposed to be held last month, that was supposed to, you know, gain community input for this, ended up being just a space where the Parks Director just said, this is going forward, to which my partner responded, then what's the purpose of us being here? If this was to be collect community response, and we're not actually, that's not gonna be considered. My biggest concern with all of this, and I think this is what most parents concerned, is just around the safety of these two proposed ideas. They just are at odds with each other, and I'm really concerned that by not having like a simple solution like limiting park hours would really deteriorate the quality of the education, because it takes away from the nature-based education that the kids can experience right now. They spend, again, the majority of their day outside, and they won't be able to do that if there's flying disc golf. And again, what Teresa was saying with some of the substance use, I have some concern about that being on the property. My other concern is this places a lot of burden on the teachers to police the whole thing. If there's trash, they have to contact, you know, whoever's to come take care of the trash. If a kid gets hit, I'm sure there's legal liability issues that they have to consider. There's no bathrooms on this property, the only bathrooms would be part of the school, so people would be knocking on the doors, can we use your restroom? Which, again, takes the teachers away from their main focus, which is providing quality education for the kids. So what I think the simple solution is, is limiting hours based on your ordinances. You should be able to do that with proper signage. And again, it's been confusing to hear otherwise, and so, again, just lack of transparency in this whole process. So what I'm asking for all of you is to potentially, or to intervene in this process, consider limiting hours. I know, again, that's the Park Director's main responsibility, but if you all can meet with him to, like, discuss this, I think this would allow both the disc golf group and the preschool to both operate, and then ensure the safety of the kids. And then that would not also limit the, or reduce the quality of education that the kids are receiving. In my last ten seconds, Lansing really needs childcare. Please don't do anything that would hurt our quality childcare that's been recently developed here. So thank you.
Sorry about that. Nick Zandi, followed by Michael Lynn.
Do we have somebody with City TV?
I got it.
You're up.
Let's get that going real quick. So I just want to say, man, I'm really proud of y'all. I really am. The housing thing, I hate that it keeps being talked about as transformational, and it's just really crazy. It's like we have this leaking wound in the City of Lansing that we keep, like, working on the other arm. Like, the right arm's bleeding to death, and then we're just like, well, let's put a tattoo on the left arm, maybe that'll fix it. Because the problem is, I believe that they, like, put this forty million dollars forward to, like, because of this housing crisis we got in the city. But maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. Seems like this housing crisis might be the reason why Sarah Anthony and Whitworth put that money together, and then the governor signed it over to us. But I don't know, man, I just don't feel like we keep having this conversation. I think some, one of the council members, I'm not gonna keep naming y'all, I'm proud of all y'all, even in the four of you guys voted for it, and that other one went all the way through. But they just keep saying, like, well, you know, we have a housing problem, so we need to touch on this, and it just, this is not gonna address that, you know that, right? It's almost like I had to have this conversation about gun violence prevention. We keep hearing this conversation, and nobody's being intentional about what that looks like or what that means. We've seen that with gun violence dollars, right? They go to, I mean, I don't know, Pedals and Pinecones one time got gun violence prevention dollars. Not to say anything about that organization, it just doesn't do gun violence prevention. So like, we keep fixing the wrong arm. And I just, I hate that the narrative comes from you all, because it makes me not trust you, because I know you guys are smarter than that. So when I hear that narrative come from y'all, I'm like, wait a minute, man, who got to you? Who got to you? And that's conversation that kept happening when, I think, I can't remember what his name was, came up here, Sean, or said, you know, that's how Lansing works, that we pay this money and these dollars to these, that's not how it should work, man. It's really not. That's not normal, yo. I think you guys know that. All of you all were down here at one point in time. I sat in there, out there, out here with you, Tamer, I sat out here with you, Trini, Pallavani Glu, by the way. I sat out here with her, I sat out with all you guys at one point in time, out here. So you all know what it is to be just a constituent. So I'm just wondering, like, what happens when y'all get back there that all of a sudden, like, we don't, we can't make sense of one and two? It doesn't make sense to me. I am proud of the four of you all who took a second guess on the Masonic Temple, and again, I don't think anybody's against it. We just, the processes, I wrote it down. Processes is what everybody keeps having a problem with, with y'all, in the administration, Mayor Shore. It's the process. It's so, we look like we don't like anything that comes out of the administration, but it's not true. I was super excited, I live in a high-rise downtown now. This smells every, we got old pipes. I'd love to live in a twenty-four-foot, or, you know, level building. But it's the processes, yo, that's what I'm down here about. The transparency, you ran on transparency as a mayor, you said, I'm gonna be the most transparent mayor you guys have ever seen, and we've not seen any of that. That's what people are complaining about. So I hope that the developers and all the great exodus that happened earlier, they're watching still, can say, we're not mad at y'all for wanting to develop here, amazing. Forty million dollars for a two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar investment, that's awesome, but we want the process to be right and fair. That's the thing. So thank you all for taking a second look at the fairness and the process. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nick, Erica Lynn, then followed by, is Daniel Arnold still here? No. Okay, Erica Lynn's our last speaker.
Good evening, y'all. Erica Lynn. Real quick, because I echo my sentiments on the voting tonight, and I do want to acknowledge really quickly, but I want to get through everything else, it was really great to see what I would view as a diverse, strong, healthy city council do what a diverse, strong, healthy city council is intended to do, which is have good discussions, get information, ask questions, do your due diligence on very big matters. So I do appreciate that, and especially those that reconsidered. You know, often you don't see a reconsideration coming from Committee of the Whole into City Council. Typically, they match up, so that was very interesting to see. And I'd say even just a couple of years ago, we would not have seen that at all. Those three would have just kind of went through, and it would have happened so fast that our heads would have spun. So appreciate that. I did also want to acknowledge, just because I've spoken on a lot of particulars about some of the developments and all of those things, but I think the vibe tonight I wanted to speak on, resolutions not passing through should not be cause for so much concern and so much discourse, especially when it is so carefully articulated why. I think every single person that was reconsidering, everyone that had concerns, everyone that had questions, articulated it very well. Every concern, every red flag, every question, every unanswered question, every piece of information that was missing from original proposals, it was articulated very well. So it felt like you all were operating in good faith, so I'll speak on the operating in good faith aspect again, because, again, folks that tend to sit in that desk there sometimes, it does not feel like they're operating in good faith. We have things that, you know, projects are very polarized like this, they're often thrust very chaotically and very rushed into your laps, and you don't have time to really break it all down the way that you would want to on something that is so big. And let's not discount how big things like this are. And then I also see the pressure that you all are under, you know, the unions, the chamber, you know, the developers, you know, Mayor Hollister, you know, coming in here. Like, if I can feel the pressure that you all are under, I know you can. So I have to think back to, you know, when we were all in here and there was a vote of no confidence on Andy Shore on the table being discussed, right? When the defund the police resolution came through, when the ceasefire in Gaza came through, it's that conversation. I didn't see that same energy. I didn't see that, I didn't see that same pressure being felt, right? And that, as a concerned community member, doesn't feel good. We can't create that type of urgency and pressure and chaos and all of that within you, but they can. And that was really, really sad for And that, as a concerned community member, doesn't feel good. We can't create that type of urgency and pressure and chaos and all of that within you, but they can. And that was really, really sad for me to kind of witness and watch, and I've seen it before, but I think it was just more polarized tonight. But I just want to, again, just say that the decisions that are made now, they affect us, the people. They affect our elders, they affect our families, our children, our grandchildren, our friends, our families, our community, for decades and generations to come. So, if people wanna be ticked off because this shiny, brand-new thing can't come here because you didn't get the information tonight that you needed, and we just have to wait a little bit longer, I say stand your ground and be okay with that. Don't let that influence the decisions that you're going to make and just kind of push for that status quo. Real quick, I wanted to just read a quote, because it's very fitting, "An environment that is not safe to disagree in is not an environment focused on growth, it's an environment focused on control." And I see a lot of control being had sometimes.
That's our last speaker. All right, thank you. We are adjourned.
Sorry about that, Jeremy, I was worried for.